Quite remarkable. We'll hear from our town accountant, we'll then proceed to talk about fiscal '15 town manager goals and discuss the concept of Reading 2020, this thought of various working groups to help make Reading better, faster, more efficient, and deliver the services and benefits that our population expects. With that, as a background, I will, if you don't mind, I'll lead off tonight with the liaison reports. I think all of you got a copy of a letter I received from Mr. Phil Vaccaro. Phil is a former athletic director at Reading High School, presently, I think, serving in a similar capacity in a nearby school system, as well as working with the MIAA, the Massachusetts Interscholastic Athletic Association. Asking the board, me in particular, but the board by extension, where we were on a proposal to deal with naming of the high school field. This was a topic that came up several weeks ago, and I think I mentioned to the group that I participated with, Reading schools are on a similar effort, and I did distribute two documents to you, which Bob just passed on for me. One of them was the raw notes that gave rise to the finished policy. The raw notes were more expansive, more general, more broad. The finished school guide is on point. Unfortunately, the school program doesn't deal with naming of a facility as much as it deals with an outstanding award. So it's not a matter of does the individual meet a certain threshold, it's do these groups of persons meet or don't meet a threshold with the intention of having an exceptional educator, an exceptional staff award. So it's not a one-time, it's intended to be every two, three, four years to acknowledge a group of persons. That said, there's a lot of the processes in the document that's directly on point, the pedigree, the references, the testimonials, the relevant educational or administrative or social background. And I guess I would be interested in seeing the board, getting the board's sense for whether you would be inclined to try to take that raw material and tailor it into a process that we might use here, or whether you're inclined to do something else. But we can, as your turn comes, feel free to talk about it, or we can talk about it separately. Anyway, that's it. That's really the only thing I want to talk about. That's something that's in our future, and I've gotten three or four calls from the public, and most recently, this letter from Mr. Vaccaro. Sorry, Bob?
If I could just jump in on that one. Tonight on pages eighteen and nineteen, as I was preparing for the storm over the weekend and cleaning my office, I found some handwritten notes from Peter Heckenplecker, and I just passed those along. There's no date on them, so I don't really know. I don't have this electronically. I just had this hard copy. I thought you'd be interested in knowing. This was a draft policy that a pass board of selectmen looked at. I'm going to guess five or so years ago.
Was this ever put in place, Bob, to the best of your knowledge?
No, I know that it was not. It was brought up by Peter and discussed. I also did, just for kicks, look around at some of our neighboring communities and some others to see if naming policies were common, and it was hard to find. One I found, where Pete is now actually, down on the South Shore, was a very restrictive policy. For one thing, you couldn't be living, you know, no such thing.
Six-six.
Yeah, exactly. It's exactly what it was. And it was extremely detailed. It must have been several pages long about very detailed, you know, naming of events, locations and buildings and so forth. And then one, one a little closer to us on the North Shore, was extremely vague and basically said it's up to the board of selectmen to decide. Yes, it's possible. They will decide on a case-by-case basis.
So you have the first two probably lots.
Yeah. So, there's no real guidance.
Looking for the just right one.
Yeah.
It strikes me the task that we're being asked to do, which is kind of consistent with the way this policy from Peter's era is written, is decide not on a general policy for, to be reviewed and implemented every year or several years, but a singular event around a singular property and a singular individual. And it strikes me that's what's different. And so, writing a policy around something that's a one-of-a-kind thing is going to be really tough. On the other hand, and I wasn't here for the football field, for the football field effort, but my understanding is that was protracted, it was detailed, there was a lot of backup material, and I don't know if those of you went through it. It seemed to me that that was never really ambiguous in terms of the outcome. It was more, it was really not a good process, and they were kind of fumbling for what's enough, what's enough. Anyway, I'll be quiet here.
Just to be clear, the material eighteen and nineteen and twenty are from Mr. Vaccaro?
No. Eighteen and nineteen is a prior letter from...
Yeah, eighteen and nineteen are historic. And I'm sorry, twenty, eighteen, nineteen, twenty are historic.
And then what about twenty-one?
And those are Pete's handwritten notes.
And what's twenty-one? That one looks like it's also a...
That might be just a summary of it. So I actually didn't see Phil's email. At least I don't remember.
Scanned it and sent it out.
Though if you send it to me, I forwarded, I didn't even read it.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
You reject it if you care to. But there were three documents you have in your inbox: Phil's letter, the finished school policy. It's got a bunch of edits, so obviously it was still in some flux. But then the input to that, which was more idea-based generation.
I think I marked that one. Read after shoveling, I didn't quite get to it.
Obviously, I impressed you.
It may wait a while.
It would be right now for me.
After shovel.
After shovel.
Marcy, comments?
No, I have no comments. No, no comments other than the fact that there's an awful lot of stuff out there.
Kevin?
Just to talk about what you brought up, I think it's definitely important for us to have some kind of set of guidelines. We're talking about naming.
Absolutely.
Putting someone's name on it for, I would assume, we don't retract these from fields and from these naming rights, right? So this is a forever thing?
Correct.
I suppose you could.
You could. The problem would be if the process was good, to put their name up there, they shouldn't.
Hope so, yeah.
So, you know, I think it's definitely worth our while to look into this a little bit more. And certainly, I'm always a fan of getting as much information as I can. What does someone else do? What hiccups have they run into with the process they've run through? You know, looking back on some historical write-up part of this as well. So I think it's important that we do have something that we come up to. I know it's tough to be, you know, lump it all into one, but I think there's definitely guidelines we could probably, probably come up with and put in place that can allow enough gray area decisions along those, of those routes to come up with an effective solution for naming.
Maybe if time permits tonight, we might have an early agenda. At the end of it, we might dive back into the school policy and see if there's a way to at least frame our thoughts around the criteria that they've used, or find out where it doesn't fit.
The one thing I'll say is I know that John Halsey is quite passionate about this, and he is not here this evening.
I've heard.
So it would, it would be a good idea to have him here for the discussion.
You'll always have to have him back. I understand that. But we might actually be able to get a little bit of work done, even in his absence.
Sure.
Don, Dan?
Mr. Chairman, yes, last Thursday, February 5th, I attended the most recent meeting of the Early Childhood Space Committee. We received an update, kind of on our mission and where we're heading. Essentially, it has turned to a near-term focus on portables. So there was a discussion about exposition from superintendent on reasons for the portables. All that will be discussed at town meeting on February 23rd. We won't be meeting again as a committee until March 12th to chart the path forward. It's going to be more of a long-term look in conjunction with the new standing building committee. So it was a kind of a brief meeting, not a lot of new things, but that's the map for it at this point.
And a school committee meeting tonight as well, on this topic?
I saw they had a meeting posted.
Yeah.
Tonight and Thursday night.
Right.
I think they have it on the meeting Thursday as well.
Oh, I think it's informational sessions are holding for town.
Right. That's right.
Right.
Yep. One other point, Bob, I emailed you on this. Received a call from a neighbor of an elderly person who was not notified till, I guess they got the reverse 911 call Sunday evening about the trash not being put out the next day this week. Had already put it out, had to come back, and a bit of a strain. I don't know if there's a way to break apart the school, the town notifications, Bob, if we're ready to go earlier?
We need to decide at 6:30, though.
Yeah.
That would be a part.
Yeah.
Six, six-thirty.
I don't know if the trash park can be done any earlier, because folks do take it out.
Yeah, absolutely could, if we had decided. That was the thing. We had, let me put it this way, we had decided, we didn't have confirmation from JRM yet that they would agree with that.
Yeah, sure. Okay. So you've got irons in the fire that you have to wait for.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure we're doing the best we can. What I've seen around town, town staff and contractors are keeping up as well as I can with this snow.
It's really remarkable.
Yeah.
It is.
Okay. Any public comment? I know the RMHS robotics team has arrived, but any...
Well, we're slowly arriving. The robot is here.
I see.
It's in the car.
I see. Need a long extension cord, eh?
No, doesn't he? He's like such a poor...
Do we have any mechanical things here, if you want to just kind of hook on the...
Well, you have the business team right now, the mechanical team is on the way.
Okay, okay. This is sales. The product team is outside. I know how that works.
Vapor work.
Bob, any comments?
I'll just do a few things, and you tell me when you need me to stop. On page sixteen and seventeen, I thought you'd be interested, there's 712 communities in the United States that have complete streets policies in place. And Reading was recently voted as tied for sixth. Now, don't have the kids listen to this, but cutting and pasting other policies, you see, does really well, as we tied with three other communities in our area. Virtually, we have the same wording for all four communities, not surprisingly, and the same MAPC representation.
Bob had said that the pen is milder than the sword, but the cut and paste is milder than the pen.
That's right. So I thought that was interesting. Also, on tonight's handout, it's towards the end, on the 22nd, just to put in your calendar, June 13th, just today came out as Reading Lions Club's annual Friends and Family Day. So that's something to look forward to in the winter.
Sounds good. Write it on there.
It'll probably be really hot that day.
I'll take it.
January, June 13th.
June 13th.
Yeah. Yep.
Massachusetts had a great...
It's a little earlier. Some years they've done it at the tail end of school. This is a little earlier. Of course, you'll be going to school until August, so...
We will be going to school on Sunday. Safe summer application.
I included in your packet over the weekend a fairly lengthy update from the engineering division. They're starting to do this, which is great. You know, you ask them to do something, and they're not going to do a short thing, so it's several pages. But, you know, this helps me, as well as it's going to help you and the whole community. I guess they put this in different formats on the website, but no one has the time to go to the website and read through all the different links. So this is a really nice document. They're going to update as needed, but at least once a month. And they're meeting now weekly to discuss this as a group, and they've never done that before. So this is in the last month or two, they've changed. And, you know, I find that I don't put this kind of information in front of you nearly as often as I should, and this is a way where it's going to be much easier to do that, instead of going interrogating them all the time. So hopefully that's helpful. You know, I learned some things that I didn't know, and found out the hard way through the community, that some projects were delayed. For instance, you know, the playground, over by the train station. And the only other comment I want to make is, is I want to thank the community. Since we were last here in the last storm, and I mentioned that Public Works was really doing the best they could, I'd say it's about a four-to-one ratio of compliments that have come in to me over complaints, which is probably unprecedented.
Yeah.
In the history of the Commonwealth for snow. It's really been very impressive. And in some cases, folks left a couple of voicemails that I forwarded down to the guys, and I can't even begin to tell you how far that goes. When you've been working for 24 hours or 36 hours, and you get a compliment from someone like that, it's really good. And, you know, next time you see an orange truck go by Thursday night or Friday, wave your shovel and salute at you, and they'll do a better plowing job if they know you like them. You know, one comment we do get from time to time, and I'm certainly a victim of it too, so no one's immune, is I just shoveled, why did you just plow me in again?
In my driveway.
It's mother nature. There's nothing they can do. If they could do it on purpose, I can assure you, mine would even be worse. It's definitely not an art or a science. It's completely random. It really depends on where you are in the street. If you're more, at the end of the street, you're going to get more volume plopped into your driveway. The more you shovel, the more you will get, because it's seeking an opening in your driveway.
Or if you live on Oakland Road.
Yes, Oakland Road would be a really bad place.
You can shovel all the way to the end and just leave an end part, but then you have to shovel all of it at once.
And that's what I've been doing lately.
Just so you know, I have done that.
Yes.
Just to put a little trick out there for folks, if you're listening, I do this all the time. It helps when you have a snowblower. So I go, I know the path that they're coming down.
Yeah.
I'll dig in two or three feet, and then leave a little lip right at my driveway. So as they're coming down the street, all that snow gets plowed into that two or three feet, and the lip stops it.
Yeah.
And then you only get a little bit left thereafter. Just saying. Out of snow blow, it's easy, shovel. I don't blame you for not doing it.
I don't know. Can't do it.
Here comes our robot. I did a little of that this time, mostly out of laziness, and it actually worked quite well.
It works well.
Kevin's real estate tricks.
Yes. Real quick, did a lot of those comments come in from See Click Fix?
Several have, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I know I used it once to...
Did you?
Yeah.
I got emails, I got voicemails, they get emails and voicemails, and I did hear See Click Fix was used a few times, though.
Okay.
This is See Click Plow, please.
Yeah.
Bob, the summary that George provided, is there a way, in your mind, that that could be put on the web as a status document that's updated with either progress or some other metric that, I'm not trying to paralysis by analysis, but is there something that provides status that would provide changes over time or some sense of progress?
I asked, it's funny you say that. We think alike. I asked for the very same thing the first time I saw their document. I said, okay, this is War and Peace. I want a one-page summary of everything that I can just see and understand, and give me gauges. We're halfway done, we're three-quarters done, and here's all the projects, so...
A milestone chart, or?
Yeah.
They must have something of this sort internally, for budgeting or execution, or...
I think it's more, they're engineers. They're complicated.
Oh.
You're asking for simple. Is it possible? Yes. Is it easy? Probably. But I agree. You know, for someone like me that wants to just glance and understand, it would be ideal. But I will say, this is a phenomenally great start.
Yeah.
It is. I'm thinking...
You need all the information before you can get to the summary.
Once you do this, then the summary maybe even should be done by a non-engineer.
Yeah.
I'm thinking more of the public who wonders where the money goes and what we're doing. It's a way to kind of illustrate that on the web, but maybe that's a second pass.
Another way, talking about accomplishments, right, that we don't talk about enough.
It's accomplishments, but also status, right?
Yeah.
Speaking of accomplishments, has this press release actually gone to the papers?
The Complete Streets?
Complete Streets?
No. No. It just came in over the weekend.
How about the triple-A rating?
No.
Okay, Bob.
Oh, actually, that may have...
The triple-A one, you don't have to wait for the...
I don't know if we ever did the debt issue. We might not. It's been too much snow.
I think you need to do that one.
Okay.
We should send that one to the Globe as well. We're one of the very few communities in the Commonwealth. That's, I think that's just phenomenal.
That's true.
There's a saying called, "Celebrate your successes," because, you know, they only come few and far between, and there's a lot of work in every one of them, so get some PR for them.
Good organizations do do that.
Okay.
I...
That's all.
Thank you. The noise in the room and the increased Ted Count can only mean one thing.
The robot has arrived.
Well, tomorrow's technology leaders have brought their latest toy. So, without any further ado, I'd...
Come on up.
If the robotics club would want to take front and center.
And if you don't mind introducing all of yourselves?
Yes.
Can I have them in the presentation?
Yeah, absolutely.
While you're here, they'll also scan all your PCs, rid them of viruses, and upgrade your hardware.
I have no idea what I might be going to say, so it's exciting.
Before you start, this is a different box than I last saw you with, right? Last time you had the beach ball device?
Yes.
This is, this is 2.0?
If you would go around the room and everyone say your name and introduce yourself?
I'm Polly. I'm a junior at the high school. This is my third year on the team, and this year I'm acting as the fundraising lead and strategy lead.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Mahoney. I'm one of the co-presidents of the team. I'm in charge of the business side. Sharaf Patel, the other business, or the other co-president, can't be here because he's working on, or this year's robot. I'm a senior at the high school, and this is my second year out.
My name's Tim Fitzgerald. I'm a junior at the high school. I'm, my official title is the systems and controls lead, but I really just do electronics for the most part.
My name's Andrew Sack. I'm a junior, and this is my second year on the team, and I'm the mechanical lead.
Jake and Karen have the steering wheel.
I'm Jacob Zeller. This is my freshman year on the team, a freshman, and I'm working with a robot.
I'm Jared Rinkin. I'm a sophomore. It's my second year on the team, and I am also a systems lead, although I work in the...
I'm Steve. And this is my third year on the team. I'm a senior, and I'm in the drive train, a drive senior.
How many seniors?
Two.
Where are you guys going to school next year?
Um, up in the air right now. Still waiting to hear back from a couple. My top ones are Northeastern and Tops.
Both good schools.
And I'm still waiting to hear back from a couple more, but most likely the University of North Carolina.
Very good. Very good.
Okay, so, first off, we want to tell you a little bit about FIRST. That's the overall, like, organization. So FIRST stands for the Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology. We are the fourth level of FIRST. We participate in FRC, which is First Robotics Competition. It's kind of known as the varsity sport of the mind because of all that we do. Overall, FRC is a huge community with thousands of students, tens of thousands of teams, and multiple countries involved. So you really see that. Once you progress further on, there's a big event at the end of the season called Worlds, and you have to qualify to get there. Our first year, we qualified, and there were other countries there too, which is really cool. It's a huge community. So what we do throughout the season is we fundraise, build, and then compete. So we're mentored by professional engineers and, yeah, professional people pretty much, to learn the best. We have business mentors and technical mentors, so we really get both sides of the scope. We build and compete with the robot of our own design. We have six weeks to build the robot. We're given our challenge in January, and we have until next week, actually, mid-February, to build the robot, which is why we're kind of stressed right now. So through this program, it opens lots of opportunities. We learn from the best, and we gain real-world experience. And we're also, we can gain lots of scholarships through it. We qualify for millions worth of scholarships, which is really cool. So we operate like a corporate engineering team. We kind of run like a small business. We have to build, fundraise, and do everything, mostly the students with just help from our mentors.
It's like a startup. You need to get your seed funding and...
Yeah. Okay, so the mission of FIRST, I kind of spoke of this earlier, is to inspire, not to educate. So it's really about inspiring students to get into the STEM subjects or the business, if that's what they want to do. It's not just about building the robot, it's about how to get there, which I talked about with the fundraising and the building and the finance and all of that. Yeah, so pretty much with teamwork, dedication, and leadership, that's how we move on and how we succeed and what we learn through the program. Okay, so a little bit about our team specifically. A lot of what we do is we promote STEM initiatives and outreach. So what we've been doing is a bunch of the team members mentor FLL teams, which is the first LEGO league in Reading, which is really fun. Their middle school teams and elementary school teams, they actually had their big competition last weekend, which was really cool to take part in. We're doing some outreach with the Library Tech Week, as well as with Girl Scouts coming up, so that's exciting. Another main mission of ours is to encourage collaboration with our mentors and students. So it's about working together and learning from the best. We gain life skills through our work, which is really cool, because that's where we'll end up. We'll end up in professional jobs in the world, in the real world, so we really learn from that. One main thing we look forward to is the innovation and creativity of the team. One of our main, or one of our most exciting days is the brainstorming week. So when it's kickoff event, we have all the kids from our eighth grade junior members to our seniors working together and brainstorming for the team. So it's really about creating the communities within the team, community, school, as well as all the different teams around the world, all the different other FIRST teams.
All right, so a little bit about our team as structural, not just what we do in general. So the first year, our rookie year, obviously, we didn't have a lot of people because not a lot of people knew what was going to happen. So we had about 18 students sign up, and about eight of them were working every day on the robot. So it's like, they had constant hands-on, and they were very busy and always kept busy. And they had five mentors to help out with this. And so next year, we pretty much doubled what we had. So students were doubled, so from about 18 to 30. And we had almost again doubled active teammate, or team members. So we had, we were a little less overwhelmed with what was going on, because we had more hands on the robot and stuff. And we expanded our mentor base by three mentors, which helped give some of the mentors that were there every day reprieved, so that they could do other stuff like their own jobs and not just, and not just be spent all day and all night thinking about the robot. And this year again, we grew by about 15 kids, or actually, I think maybe a little bit more than that. But, and the mentors, we can't say who's been active, because they were, well, anyway, can still be active from now until pretty much the end of the week. And so I'd say, once again, we probably doubled the active participants. So once again, it gives people like the leads a break and have, that know that we're in competent hands to lead them in. And we pretty much doubled our mentor base, which is awesome, which means that the mentors can switch off days and have a set schedule, and relieve some of the pressure of having them be there every day to help us, so...
Can I ask a question? Who are your companies, or your mentors from?
We have Paragine and Textron and where else?
Absalon.
There we go.
Absalon.
Absalon.
Irobot.
Irobot.
Spizer.
Spizer.
That's your mom.
UTC.
Oh, yeah.
Big one.
So, all over.
We have a programming mentor from National Hospital.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
So we come from all the different...
Nice variety.
And...
Always good to plug your sponsors. There's more where that came from.
Of course. All right, so a little bit how we formed. So it really started off when the first LEGO league came to Reading in 2007. And so as that grew, the first O.L. students moved to the high school in 2012. So the people were graduating, and they were like, hey, what did we want to, we don't really have anything to do anymore, because they can't join FLL, they're too old. So FRC was started, or the FRC team here was started to kind of alleviate that problem, and have the people who are in FLL and so wanted to explore robotics, at least for the first year anyway. It was just robotics, but we're expanding that, so other people can come. But it was started, and our team was kind of born. So and then our first year, we were really new to FRC, and we really were just about the robot, as I mentioned earlier. There wasn't really a whole lot of business side or planning involved at all. It was more tinkering and building. So it was like, hey, that works, stay with that, because, you know, it works. No real plan involved. And it was not really organized at all, because everybody had to do everything, because we were kind of small. And we were focused really on building and competing with that, and we're kind of moving away from that. We still have to build and compete, obviously, but we're getting our name out there and presenting to everybody and saying thanks to all our sponsors and stuff like that.
I was glad.
And then our accomplishments, so what we've achieved in the past two years that we've been a team. So the first year, we competed in the Boston Regional. We ranked 12th overall, which is excellent for a first-year team. We had absolutely, well, I wouldn't say we had no clue, but we didn't have a, know a lot of what we were doing. And we actually became an alliance captain, and, well, that happened. We didn't really know what we were doing. We got to the quarterfinals, though, so that was great. And we actually got the Rookie All-Star Award, which qualified us for Worlds, which is where we met all the teams from different countries that first year. And it was excellent. We also got the Highest Rookie Seed Award, which is two prestigious awards for a first-year team to get. And it basically means that we were the best of the rookie teams that year. And they qualified us for the St. Louis World Championship, which we went in and competed in. And it was a great experience for our team, because it was something that I don't think we even thought of being able to get in that first year. And then we actually competed in an off-season event called the Beantown Blitz at Northeastern. We ranked third overall in there, and once again, that's pretty excellent for a first-year team. And we once again became an alliance captain, which I think we were a little bit more prepared for at that time. And we got to the quarterfinals again, so a great rookie year for us, and that was really nice. So then, 2014, the regional events kind of came a little bit differently last year. We actually got to compete in two, so it made it really nice, and we got more experience in like drive... So we got more experience in like driving and stuff. And, uh, so we went at the Rhode Island District where we actually won overall. So that was excellent with our teammates. We won the entire thing, so that was excellent. And we were ranked seventeenth out of something like forty robots. So once again, great first kind of competition for our second-year team. We came out strong. And we continued that with the Northeastern District that we came upon, and we ranked twenty-fourth. So a little bit worse, but still great for us. And, uh, we got to the quarterfinals that time, so it was really nice. And through those two, it, uh, allowed us to go to the New England Championship. We got enough points in those two districts to get to the New England Championship. And we were among the fifty-three best teams in New England, so it was great. And we ranked thirty-fifth out of the fif, or thirty-fifth out of the fifty-three teams. And that was really, uh, nice standing because we were with the best teams in New England, and it was nice. So that was our accomplishments through the two years. And so this year, we decided, hey, we really need to work on the structure of our team. So we came with, up with this over the summer and decided to put them into five or six different bodies. And it was programming, electrical, mechanical, pneumatics, design, and business, where business had subcategories of fundraising, accounting, and marketing because business is just, well, very complicated, and you need to have subsections of that. And then we also had scouting and strategy, which comes a little later during the competition season. So, uh, programming, I think we all know that that's kind of just like coding and making stuff work on the robot after it's all built, said, built. And so that usually comes towards the end where we really have everything electrically and mechanically sound. So we have, we have them currently testing on an older robot, but they can't really do anything for this year's robot unless there's something actually built for them to test on. So, oh, and, so the electrical and mechanical teams are really the forefront of the beginning of the year anyway. So the electrical gets the, I think of it as like the white blood and circulation system that's like in the human body. It really sends all the signals and tells the robot what to do, and programming is like the brain of that. So the electrical just sends the signals that the programmers tell them to do.
How do your teams interact with one another?
Yeah.
How do they do that?
So, uh, programming has, we have this, uh, well, there's a computer right here, and that gets signal from a wireless router. And so there's joysticks like we have over there behind us on the drumstick.
I meant people-wise.
Oh, people-wise?
People-wise, it's very, um, mushed together, I want to say. We don't have, like, over there, looking across them, they don't have specific teams exactly. Most of the programmers just work on programming, but they're also allowed to do whatever else they want. Like, I'm the business lead, but I also do a lot of, I work with mechanical stuff if they need me. Um, the teams are kind of just team leads, and then how we have it structured or how we want to have it structured is that each team lead will have an assistant who they'll try to take over their position. But everyone else, they're just trying to learn what they like to do, and that's kind of how we want it to be structured.
Yeah, the only team that's really more set in stone is programming because they need the skill of programming.
They need the prior knowledge of that, so...
Is somebody in charge of integrating all these things?
The two co-presidents are kind of the people that go to and like, hey, what can we do? At least at the beginning anyway. And then those happen. So and then pneumatics is the, uh, air pressure and controlling that. So we have, like, this year, we have a pneumatic arm that goes up and down off of that because electrical and motors would be too slow. So we just wanted something really fast and up and down motion. And, well, design team is probably the most important because they come up with like the idea and kind of develop it the most. And we actually cat up an entire picture of the robot, and that's not the robot for this year. But, um, that's what happens in the design team. We make the plan, see if it'll work like theoretically-wise, and make it tatted to make sure it all fits together and stuff. And then business is business, uh, you fundraise because, you know, robots are expensive and we need money. Uh, we need someone obviously to make sure our books aren't in the negatives so we can actually function as a team and not be in debt. Um, and then marketing is like paying, they're promoting our robot and our team in general and getting our name out there into newspapers and all other stuff to make sure that people know who we are. And then the scouting and strategy, as I said before, is kind of last because you can't really, well, you can strategize in the beginning and figure out what you're going to do with the robot at the beginning. And then the scouting part is saying, how can we work well with other robots? And that really can't be shown until the competitions roll around, and then we have to really be on top of all of that because if we become an alliance captain, we need to know what's going on.
How big was your budget then?
Uh, sorry, that's what I'm talking about. So as Tim said, robotics is very expensive, but contrary to most people think, the, um, robot is actually a very small part of the expenses. Most of it is, um, fees for the competition and stuff. And so our rookie year, our budget was about twenty-four thousand dollars, and most of that was spent on fees and also, uh, travel. And so our second year, we only spent about sixteen thousand dollars, but the main difference between the two years was our first year, we went to, uh, Nationals in St. Louis, which that...
That's this red.
That's the red. Yeah, and so, yeah, and so this year, uh, it's nine thousand because it's current. We haven't spent that much yet, but, yeah.
As of January.
Yeah, as of January. But we still, if we progress more and depending what we do in the off-season, that can grow. And then, so this year, actually, we've raised a lot more money than we have in any previous year. We've raised thirty-seven thousand to date, and... Yeah. And so that money allows us to do more things and to go. And if we do travel to St. Louis, to, uh, it allows us to bring more people and subsidize it more and also to do other things as a team. And as you can see, we try, and mo, our most of our money comes from corporate sponsors, and we're trying to increase that primarily. And then we also get some money from, uh, a little bit of money from just fundraising in town and some from like friends and family. But, yeah, most of it is from corporate sponsors. So it's interesting because we have to like write grants to companies and stuff to... So it gives us that sort of real-world experience. It also, by going to corporate sponsors, it alleviates the, um, financial strain on families.
And then I will project the purple at the top, that's all pledge money. So it's if we qualify, they're paying for our registration, which is a huge portion of our budget.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
And so, uh, some of the stuff we've done in the community is, as Caitlin had about a bit earlier, um, some of our team members have mentored, uh, FLL teams. And, um, some other things we do are, we have two junior members who are eighth graders in middle school who are part of the team, and so it's cool because they get to go up and experience what it's like, uh, before high school.
Awesome.
And it's also good for us because it allows us to have some team members who will grow up to have more experience and be more knowledgeable. And then, so we also, uh, participate in events like the Reading Educational Foundation Festival of Trees, where we donate a tree, and things like the Friends Family Day and the Reading Tree Fair, where we set up a, a tent and we, um, we're demoing a robot. And we also have done demonstration for various sponsors as well. And then some upcoming stuff we have is the, um, as Caitlin said, the Reading Library Team Tech Week, where we're going to do a workshop and have them build little tiny robots. And then we're going to do something with the Girl Scouts and also some more stuff from middle school as well.
All right, so every year we get a new challenge, and this year's challenge is called Recycle Rush. Um, so the game Recycle Rush is played by two alliances, which are made up of three separate teams. So for example, our team will be paired with two other random teams, and we will play against another three teams. Um, so the game is played, um, by scoring, um, using totes and recycling bins. So as you can see in this picture, the yellow are totes, the green are recycling bins. And, um, and you got points depending on how high, um, you have stacked your totes and recycling bins. Um, we also have pool noodles that are given to us, which is supposed to represent litter. Um, it's very recycling themed, and we get points for either recycling litter or shoving it into a zone called the landfill zone, which is on the field. And the game is played in both an autonomous and teleoperative period. So at the beginning of the match, we'll have fifteen seconds where we have a pre-programmed, um, program running. So we're not in control of the robot, the robot is controlling itself. Um, and then we also will have approximately two minutes of a teleoperative period in which we have students actually driving the robot around the field and trying to stack the totes. So this is our robot for the year, um, well, the design for our robot. It's top secret. You could all, we can only show it to you for a brief second because no one can know. Um, and then also, um, in addition to all of our regular events this year, we are actually also hosting a district here in Reading. Um, it's going to be held in the Reading High School Field House, um, and it's going to be from Friday, March sixth, to Sunday, March eighth. Um, so this is the first year we're doing this. Um, it's been interesting trying to plan it. Um, we have about forty different teams that are coming to Reading, including us. Um, each team has approximately thirty students on it, um, several mentors, and all of their families will also be coming to Reading. Um, we are both hosting and competing in it. It's going to be a very stressful weekend for us. Um, we're expecting about four thousand people to be coming just from FRC. Um, and it's also going to be, um, an opportunity for everyone in the Reading community to come see what we're about and what, um, robotics is about.
Any tie-in with any of these in the local colleges, whether it's Tufts or MIT or...
Some teams, um, do actually partner with various colleges. We have not done so yet, um, I don't think. Right, we don't have a college? Yeah, but there are several teams. For example, there's a team that's run out of W P I, um, where W P I has the Mass Academy of Math and Science high school students that are all mentored by the college students. There are a few other teams that do that.
Yeah, there's one at Northeastern that, and their shop is in Northeastern, and they get a lot of North, uh, mentors as well.
They're helping us a lot with the competition because they also, that's very helpful. Um, so at competition, it's going to be a great way to showcase, um, the Reading community. So, um, first off, we've asked some of the local FLL teams to come show their robots off at our competition and give them some recognition too because we really want them to, first of all, come to our competition and also, um, show them that, you know, you can do this stuff and this is what, um, you can lead up to. Um, we're also going to be supporting the Reading Food Pantry and having a food drive going on during our competition. Um, and having a bunch of local businesses, um, helping us with food vending, volunteering, and promoting the event. So it's going to be a great way to showcase all of Reading. Um, so if you would like to support us, which I hope you do, um, you can help us by promo, promoting our event in the community, um, so making connections with various sponsors in the community and possibly advertising around town for, um, competition. Um, also, if any of you are interested, we do need potential judges at the competition who would actually be watching the matches and making sure that no one is getting penalties or judging for various awards that you can get there, such as the Chevron's Award, which is about business more than the robot. Um, we're also looking to get some sort of police detail. Um, with, there's a drama presentation at the high school at the same weekend. We're wondering if there's any way that you could help us possibly combine the costs instead of firing two.
Wait till you get the snow room budget.
Um, and also come watching us compete and just seeing what we're about. So, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Well, the first question I have for you in that regards is if someone wanted to make a donation, did you guys have something set up, is it by mail, website, or...
We have our website, robockets.org.
Okay, do you have that on, they can put up on the computer by any chance?
I can write it down.
There you go, write it down. That's one you definitely want to have up there.
I believe there's a page on there that links to our PayPal account.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, under about us.
And it's a five oh one C three, Reading Engineering Team, so it's for the entire league.
Tax deductible, that's great. Okay, so if anybody listening at home wants to donate, it is right there.
Where it's educational, there's a potential for matching too, that's what the company does.
Exactly.
I gotta imagine every mom and dad works at an organization, anywhere that shows a candidate for corporate companies. She probably is, every mom and dad.
Oh, yes. We have a list of all of the, where the parents work. We like go out there and like donate money to five oh one C threes.
Well, why don't you, uh, show us what you have?
You have a version with a snowplow, dude.
We have a snow, a snow show.
Okay, melt snow maybe?
If we could work on one that clears your roof off, that would really be amazing.
Yeah, that would be very nice.
It might be a little too heavy.
I was doing the stumples of a roof earlier today.
So, um, just to clarify, this actually is not our robot for the year. Um, the base of it has actually been a sort of testing robot for the programming team. And the top of it is actually from our rookie year in, um, two thousand and thirteen, where we were asked to shoot prisbees, it's kind of a, we are right now. Is this part of a couple of matches?
That thing's like a baseball pitcher. You don't want to be hit by it anywhere below a stack.
We, we don't have, we don't have the mechanics wired up for a D top, so you're in no danger.
Gun is not loaded, I've heard that.
Looks like a railgun.
The tires are inflated to the obligatory twelve point five.
Yes.
Yeah, we, we just put this back together.
Penelope, huh?
Yep, yes. Or at least topical.
And the mentors that you guys have, have they helped you a lot from like the structure of your, of your team, how it's set up, or is that something that you guys all kind of came up?
We definitely knew that we needed to change it because before it was kind of just common ground. And as the season last year progressed, we kind of saw the natural leaders standing out. So over the summer was when, or at the end of the year after the competitions, that's when we kind of decided that we needed a structure, kind of like a goal for students to go, like, go towards to get the leadership positions. Um, so we created the structure and then had applications. And, yeah, it's working out. The mentors ultimately made the final decision, but, um, there weren't a lot of students that had, like, stood out previously, so it wasn't like a very competitive selection.
Okay.
It's, we hope that it's going to be in...
Seems like it's going in that direction.
Oh, it definitely needs to go in that direction.
Especially with almost fifty kids.
Evidence that this has helped, uh, other past graduates in college or applications?
Um, so we only have a couple who are now in college, really. Um, but I think as it grows, it's definitely going to help kids stand out. I know some colleges on their... No, no, the prisbee party is... You guys want to, someone want to explain what kind of wheels?
You guys ever seen Robocop?
Doesn't end well.
Yep, our wheels actually have a fun name. It's called Macenum, and they basically, these rollers here do not move in. Wheels here have rollers on them, that's a bin, and they actually allow us to turn in any direction instead of it being...
Wow, that's really cool.
Instead of it being traditional, like, wheels that go straight back, and then we turn like that. These can actually go in a diagonal movement.
Well, basically, they, um, because of the way the rollers are, when you drive forward, the wheel actually wants to go at a forty-five degree angle. So when you control, and all the wheels are controlled individually, so by doing that, you can actually make it go, like, you can make it straight to the left or anything. You can make it in any direction you want.
You can make it really go in any direction. The only bad, I wouldn't say it's a bad side.
Two inspection here.
The only downside...
Well, that's why you couldn't see this year's robot.
Well, the difference really between these wheels and traditional ones is that, uh, because these want to go at a forty-five degree angle, some of the pushing force is lost... these want to go at a forty-five degree angle, some of the pushing force is lost and we can be pushed all around. So, if you've got a really good driver, you can just spin off, but it's not meant for plowing. If we add the other wheels, it's.
Sorry, no, tell it this one.
Don't worry, we could just switch them to the other wheels and they could plow.
There you go.
Twenty hours in this build.
Oh, God. So, we build over the span of six weeks, so we get our, we get our assignment. When was it, January third?
January third.
And we have, from that moment that it's introduced to us, exactly six weeks to design and build our own robot.
Next Tuesday.
At midnight.
Yeah, so, we have midnight deadline, Tuesday next week. We will probably be there.
Till midnight.
Yeah, if you come at eleven fifty-nine, you'll see us panicking.
We'll probably be at the school packing up until like one. I think that was what was happening the last year.
Yeah, I think you got home about one.
I think I got home at like one thirty, maybe.
So, we meet pretty much every night from seven to nine thirty until it becomes closer to the end, so that's when we start staying later until ten thirty, eleven.
So, why, we stay there quite late anyway.
And then, so that's Monday through Friday, then we met Saturdays, like nine to four, and now we're including Sundays on that too. So, it's a, it's a big task.
It's.
You guys have, except it's a small budget, but the actual building, right?
Right, it's only, it's four thousand.
Is that pretty universal for, for all the teams involved?
Yeah, you're only allowed, four thousand.
Oh, you're only allowed four thousand, okay.
Yeah, the rest of it goes towards registration fees and travel, like buses.
And some teams have two robots, so they have their actual robot that they compete with and then a duplicate practice robot.
Now, can they, can they spend four thousand on each, or is it four thousand?
Yeah, so it's four thousand on each, but they can only compete with one, but when they bag, right, because they bag that.
Here's the thing, on February seventeen, your actual robot has to go in the bag and you can't touch it till you compete. But if you build an extra one, you can use it for programming and for driving practice, so it's sort of a way to get around that.
So, fundraising does play a big factor in helping to do better in these competitions.
And what you guys should tell about, there's basically.
But they need these resources to build two, not just one, so.
So, this year, we also moved out of our closet on the third floor that we had before. We had this tiny room about.
It was a closet.
From where you're sitting, to where you're sitting, that corner. That was about the size of our space, so we'd bring it out to the hallway and work on it. This year, we moved down next to Dr. Doherty's room, so we have a larger space and we got a CNC machine, which is a big new tool, expensive. We got it for free, which is really nice.
From Northeastern.
From Northeastern.
What is the CNC tool?
It.
So, basically, it.
A more technical one.
So, it's a CNC router, which, so, part of it is, it has a big assembly that can move around very precisely. And then, attached to that is a very fast spinning bit, which can cut through metal, wood, pretty much anything, and so you can use that to make very precision.
That kind of router.
So, so what's going on? It's controlled by the computer, CNC stands for computer and memory code. Okay, so, it's a three-axis machine with a spindle and a bit, like, regular hand drill, but basically mounted on a, on this three-axis machine. So, you can cat something up, I don't know if any of you can, it's just basically like 3D imaging on the computer. You can then send it to the CNC mill, which will then carve it out.
You guys doing 3D printing also?
Yes.
Yeah. We have a 3D printer, except we don't really use it that much, because it's not great, but one of our mentors has a 3D printer, then also.
A couple of our.
Our co-president has a 3D printer as well.
And there's a few other people that have 3D printers.
Well, this is pretty impressive, coming from a generation where if you worked in your car, it was worth an essay in college. I just kind of believe this is going to pay huge dividends. I mean, it's as competitive as anything out there in the college world, and you guys are showing not only your aptitude, but your love and your willingness to put time into something that you think is important, and I think that speaks volumes. Really impressive.
And learning to work together, collaborative as a team, and that's terrific.
Yeah, the real-world applications that you guys are learning and going through are amazing.
And the business part of it is huge.
You can be all ahead of your peers.
It may not, it may sound like that's the product, but selling the idea and selling the sizzle before you have a mistake is a smart.
We really operate.
You don't have a frisbee on you, do you?
I think I saw this, you had this at the Fall Street Fair.
Yeah.
And we also had it at Friends and Family Day.
And, yeah, Friends and Family Day, we always have one too.
Robockets.org.
Yeah.
And then, First is at USFirst.org, so that's the organization that we're a part of. We'll have Caitlin write that up as well.
Which is the shortest path to manageable.
For us, it's the robockets.org.
Then you click on the web tab on there?
There's a tab that says Contact Us, and under there, it says sponsor.
No, I think it's.
How does it contact?
And then it's donate or something?
Yep, there's videos on our website, all sorts of things. We also have a Facebook page, and for the younger kids, we have Instagram and Twitter. So, we're trying to get out there and make our presence known.
Maybe on your website, your programmers can do a donate button.
We do have a donate button, no, we do have that, that is on them. It's under the, it's under the Contact Us, there is a donate, PayPal button for donating. But really, come see the event in, in March. It's, it's a lot of fun, it's a family event, it doesn't cost anything.
It's all day.
And it's all day, but you don't have to stay all day, over two days, Saturday and Sunday.
And like the competitions, like, I know when I went to my first one, I was sort of expecting it to be like, just like quiet and a bunch of people just like dragging robots around and stuff, but like, it is intense, like, there's music blasting, it's like.
Some teams wear capes.
It, it's like any other.
That's all, because he has mohogs. No, I like all the. Our mentor's stuff is the Wizard of Oz.
Oh, yep.
I agree, some have got the sizzle.
We're not, we're a little more subtle, we're a little more conservative.
Who've ever heard of Destination Imagination?
Yes.
Because this is, this is like the technology version of that idea. There used to be a lot of teams in town that did that, so.
Yeah, yeah.
And it is quite an amazing.
So, your software guy's always late? No? No? Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Part of the whole thing is to show that we do things like this, this is part of our outreach, this is part of our business.
Should I get the first slide of our?
Pardon?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, go back, I'm sorry.
Except you want to be able to see the fundraiser.
Yeah, all of the students.
You can get in the middle.
You're true.
I'll go up there.
Yeah, I can't turn too far.
I can still get one little picture.
Could a couple of folks in the front?
Guys take a knee.
Excellent.
There you go.
Excellent.
Awesome.
You're good, you can stay right there, you're good.
Yeah, all right, everyone look at me, thank you. I tell them, I always do three. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks for coming out, it was great.
Thank you.
This looks awesome.
You got it.
Can we take a two-minute break while they?
De-robots.
De-robots.
Good job, guys.
Hey, what happened? Where's all the heat?
This is true. The freshmen, yeah.
I have seen, it's pretty impressive. Oh, it's great.
Certainly, it was a pleasure.
So, Drew, I'm really, you know, I don't want to put it down, but here's the part of this is, is the transition from the area of practice. Some of these kids that just turned one, just get out of the room. So, that can be a worry to some kids.
Right there in the front.
Look at that.
Yeah, see, right there.
There it is.
Oh, they did move it out, they did move it out. We asked them to, but they. They have it right in the front.
Sir.
Awesome. So, yeah, that's our.
That's the secret play, we can't drill that.
And then if you want to see under media.
Look at that.
Yeah, that was from, John Nelson said nice things about us, so we featured him. That's from the festival trees.
Nice.
Yeah, that's this year's design.
We have to put the top secret.
Under media, you'll see, someone asked me about videos, so you can see, you just, there's a dropdown under media. We've got tons of photos, videos. We didn't show you our video from last year's event, but that's kind of fun to watch, that is the yoga ball throwing one. You scroll down, go on what is last year, this is the one from our, our competition last year, it's fun to watch. And that's last year's robot. So, we have, and the students make all the videos, they're pretty amazing, post them on YouTube.
Is there any significance to four, seven, six, one?
That's just the number they gave us. That's our team number in the first world. So, people get known by their team names, where the robockets, and also their number. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you.
Sharon, that's going to be a tough one to follow.
Nothing that exciting to follow. We do finances for it.
If I could make a motion to step aside and let the next generation take over.
No, motion denied.
Yeah, it's a good point, Bob, it's amazing how much farther the kids.
Oh, it's no comparison. Yeah.
I'm still just amazed at, you know, where these kids are going to go from this point forward, and this, the real-world aspect of this, this team, the way they put it together, structured it, and are out there doing things that they're going to be doing in business, you know, and in this field for the rest of their lives. I mean, I never started with that, you know, with that kind of focus in my sense, so it's really impressive. There was no focus on collaboration when I went to high school. You're an individual scholar, you know, working in teams.
It's pretty impressive.
Or you're competing against somebody.
Yeah, right, right.
It's athletics for the technologists, right?
There you go.
Teams for the technologists.
Ren X.
Okay. Our next topic is.
It's going to be up there all night.
Our next topic is to hear from our town accountant and receive her report. Sharon?
Grab that door.
Jean's got it.
I definitely don't have any of that excitement.
Any moves or lights up or?
I should have come first.
AAA rating excites me, so.
So, I figured I'd start by giving you kind of a update of where we stand financially speaking through Thursday, when I checked last. And we'd collected about sixty-six percent of our revenues and had spent about sixty percent of our budgeted expenses. No real cause for concern there, those seem to be, actually, the revenues are ahead of projection, so that's pretty good. So, the only other thing I failed to kind of look at on Thursday, but I looked at on today for Jeff, was where we stood in snow and ice. And we do.
Good thing we're ahead on revenue, huh?
Yeah. We have hit the red. As of today, in the general ledger, we have just about a negative eight thousand, and that included the storm. It looked like a lot of the bills were in there for the storm for February second and January twenty-sixth. So, this storm that we just had, not in there yet, so we're definitely going more negative than that.
I've heard a lot worse in other communities, though.
And I don't know that everything's there, there could be things that haven't hit yet, so, but we're, we're already negative, and so figured that should be mentioned.
What's the budgeted amount, is it like seven fifty-six?
It was six twenty-five, I think, so, yeah. We usually increase it each year, but not by a lot, and then we always usually, when we're, when we're over, we usually transfer from other available funds. As far as reporting goes, everything has been reported for fiscal fourteen, that would be the Schedule A, the end of year, all the free cash and the tax recap, all that is complete, and so I can focus on the monthly closes and anything that's my day-to-day typically. The audit was performed, and I have a draft of the financials, it takes me quite a bit of time to get through them, they're like ninety-five pages, and I like to check every number and understand where all the numbers are coming from. And so, that takes a little bit of time, a little back and forth with the auditors. I don't agree where this number come from, that sort of thing. So, once I give the approval that I understand everything, that they're final, they'll issue us final financials, and I'll schedule a meeting with the audit committee, and then if you guys wanted a presentation, they sometimes will do that too, depending on who's on the audit committee and if, you know, who the Board of Selectmen liaison is on the audit committee, and are you the liaison?
I am, is it the same, you have the same person with the audit firm who did the update last time?
Yes.
He did an excellent job, I would recommend that you have him come in.
Yeah, so we can have them come in, I don't think they did one last year for the Board of Selectmen, but they can certainly come in, they did the audit committee. I don't think they came for, they did, we did it so, last year they did it, it was late, because, what was the reason it was late? I don't remember, but it was late.
I think, I think there was a little maternity issue in there.
Yes, that might have been it.
I think that might have had something to do with it.
Because I think they sent the financials to me, and I was a maternity leave, I'm like, I'm in no condition to look at these. My current focus is on budget work for fiscal sixteen, closing up any months that I'm behind on, since I've been kind of focused on these reporting deliverables and analytical work and whatever I have on my desk, and then any, any things that people are requesting on a day-to-day. We did recently do Immunos Upgrade mid-January, Gail organized it, Gail's been doing all of that. And she did it early this year, because we had some issues with the last upgrade. And it wasn't, it didn't seem to be a problem for everybody, but in the collector's office, it was slow processing payments. And it wasn't slow and trained, so what we typically do is we put everything in a test environment before we go live with it, and we did not notice the slowness in the test environment, yet when we went live, it went much slower than what we're used to. They couldn't give an answer for that. The one thing we had discovered is that we were on ten-four, and I think there was only thirty other communities on ten-four and maybe three hundred communities on ten-five. And so, when there were problems coming up, they were putting more attention towards ten-five, and so we said, let's move to ten-five faster, because whenever I'd get a, you know, if Kevin would do updates on a Wednesday, I'd come in on a Thursday and get calls about all kinds of things just going wrong, because sometimes an update would be out there and he would accept it, because we accept all, but maybe it was to address something in another community and it somehow messes up something in our, and so, and then we would wait a little bit while for a fix on it, because we'd be on ten-four and they'd be fixing the ten-fives first, because that affected more communities, so that was part of it. When they went to ten-five in the test environment, they didn't notice any slowness there either, but when they went live, they still don't see much improvement. Thankfully, it's only the collector's office and they're still working on it, and Gail's very diligent, she doesn't mind rattling their cage every chance she gets, so.
She's also much warmer than we are in Florida.
Yes, and so I.
I was going to say, she's not here, right?
So, I'm hopeful that she'll get a resolve for some of our issues, but now that we're on ten-five, I feel like as things come up, they will be addressed faster, because so many more are on that.
Sharon, are these, are these functionality improvements or stability improvements? Are there benefits in this that you see, or you might not?
There wasn't much change for where we moved from ten-four to ten-five, except for the fact that more users were on, there wasn't a lot of significant change or improvements that I saw from what I do. There may be, every time we do an upgrade, depending on how big a jump it is, if we're going to the, you know, from ten-four to eleven-four, you're going to see a lot more changes. When you're going from ten-four to ten-five, there's not a lot of changes from the different There wasn't much change for where we moved from ten-four to ten-five, except for the fact that more users were on, there wasn't a lot of significant change or improvements that I saw from what I do. There may be, every time we do an upgrade, depending on how big a jump it is, if we're going to the, you know, from ten-four to eleven-four, you're gonna see a lot more changes. When you're going from ten-four to ten-five, there's not a lot of changes from the different versions from that small of a jump, and sometimes there are major changes when you jump for a bigger span. From ten-four to eleven-four, I think you'd see a big gap, and we didn't go to the eleven versions, because I think it requires us to have a more expensive SQL server, according to Kevin, and so we went to the ten-five, so that will require capital investment, I think, on our part to go there for the version eleven. But I think that we'd want to understand why we're having problems, because it seems to me, well, if in the test environment wasn't that way, and the live it is, something is different about the test environment than the live environment, and they haven't been able to identify it, and they said they've done all the comparisons, so I'm not entirely sure where they're at with that. So that's a concern, but it only seems to affect the collector's offices from what I hear. We also have the issue with dashboard at the school department. They, they access Lucitrix, and that can be a little bit slower, and they're working on that. But that's something I think we can control, this unknown that's causing the collectors a little bit of a hassle, we just don't know what it is, and it's been going on for a while, so. Other items I plan on working on this year is everything Redding twenty-twenty and town manager goals. There is a Gatsby fifty-four fund policy that I've been trying to get to, and I kind of drafted kind of a rough draft of it, and the auditors have provided me an example of one that has been finished by, you know, they've asked this of a lot of towns, and not many of them have completed it, because it's, you know, if that one's out there as an example, you're not really sure, what do they need, what do they want, you know?
So can you just give us the Cliff Notes version of what that is, for those of us who don't have the Gatsby numbers memorized?
The different fund balances are set into different categories based on Gatsby fifty-four, and it'd be unassigned, you know, non-spendable, these different categories, and they want us to detail when, what we consider those categories to be, what would fall in those categories, as well as the order which we spend money. If we have a grant and we have free cash or whatever, what is the order of which that that money gets spent, and so that they're, so it's clear in a policy. And then also, what reserves do we require to be held, you know, five percent, ten percent? So all of that into a policy, and so I've kind of been reviewing the one that they gave me, and just kind of getting some tips of what did I have in the original draft, and what did they have here that I didn't touch upon, and trying to do that, haven't had time to do it, but hopefully it'll be something I get done soon. And the other thing that's on the agenda, hopefully we get to it this year, is electronic billing. There's an RFP that we need to issue to see if that can move forward and get electronic billing out there for us. The only other thing that I've been involved in is the investigation of the surplus vehicles. Mark Doxter was kind enough to involve me in all of the meetings regarding that. The team met up several times, I want to say four or five times, went over, I sent them everything I had, and I think, I couldn't believe how much they actually went through, because it was quite a bit of information. They did review it and decide, you know, geez, we're not sure, you know, if we can make determination, we want somebody who knows more about this, so they had decided pretty quickly they wanted a CPA firm to do some sort of review of what was there, and if there was an area that needed to be addressed further, or if they were satisfied that this is an isolated incident caused by a poor policy, and that was all. So they interviewed several different CPA firms, and ended up going with Powers and Sullivan for agreed-upon procedures engagement, not necessarily an audit, but just kind of some agreed-upon things they just like looked at regarding disposal of surplus. And it would be in three phases. The first phase would be to look at the RMLD transaction, and I believe the one that was here, the DPW dump truck that we had. Look at the backup, see if there's any holes in it and things that they think should've been looked at, or any concerns that they would say on their end, because they're trained to look for areas that they would drill more into, because it causes them concern. And after each phase, they will be reporting back to the subcommittee about what they, what their findings are, and then at that point, the subcommittee will have the opportunity to decide, do we move forward with the next phase, or do we stop, because we're satisfied? So that first step is reviewing that first, the first transactions that I've already kind of looked at. The second phase is doing some surveying of department heads on their procedures to dispose of surplus, and listing out all the surplus that we've disposed of in the last couple of years, and then they'll do some risk assessment and make a list of ones that they would like to test. They'll bring that report to the subcommittee, and then the subcommittee will look at that, and there'll be a risk assessment as to why they selected the ones they've selected, and then they, again, it goes back to the subcommittee, do you want to proceed? And if they proceed, they would test those in detail, the ones that they're, or they probably make, they might make some, you know, oh, I think five is too many, let's do three, you know what I mean? There might be some concessions that are made there, and then they'll do the testing of that, and then at that point at the end, they would make recommendations, they would, you know, give their findings, and the recommendation could be that, you know, we think we need to delve deeper, and that, that would be another conversation for something else, because that would go beyond what they have the money to do. So that's where they're at currently. Other than that, I don't think I had anything else to share with you, unless you guys have questions for me.
I have a question, just on the surplus trucks that came back, do you know if they ever did dispose of them, and how much money they got for them?
I haven't heard anything about them. I knew that the last I checked, they had, just had them on the lot.
Because I'd heard they were anxious to sell them, and that's why they wanted to change their policy, so I was just.
I can certainly reach out and find out, you know, find out if they have eventually done that, because the firm that I reached out to, to identify their actual value, is very interested in helping us dispose of them.
Right.
So, you know, they, if they're just hesitant, because they're afraid they're gonna mess it up again, they certainly have somebody that's willing to help execute it for them, so.
Sharon, when would you expect the schools and the town to get reviewed under that?
I would think the first phase was looking at the transactions that were the initial cause for concern, which is their RMLD transaction and the dump truck, so that would involve the town and RMLD in the first phase, and they just recently got the money assigned to them, so I don't think that any, I'm not clear that any work has actually even been started yet, so I wouldn't think until sometime in late February, early March would be when I'd expect they'd start the second phase.
Relative to your earlier comments about the Immunis product, do you have an opinion as to what it would cost us to get current with the product, maybe add the efficiencies that are?
I'd have to consult with Kevin, I'm not, you know, because it's, he was saying it was a SQL server, which I'm not privy to what those.
Those would be ten grand? It's not a lot.
The other thing is, how many communities are on that?
And that's another concern, too.
So if almost everybody's on five, you really don't want to be on the bleeding edge on the new versions.
The other thing that we've kind of tried to stay away from is being the, on the newest version, and I think eleven is one of the newest versions, and that, that sets us up to be working out their bugs.
Yeah, you really don't want to be.
And so we, we've been trying to stay away from that, because sometimes there are problems when they introduce some.
Well, and they're gonna throw all the money, like you said, at the, at the version that has the most customers, so you don't really want to be the person that's on the newest version, because they're gonna be trying to.
Absolutely, yeah, so that's a concern as well. So I think that's why Gail decided, okay, ten-five is where we're at for now, and then we'll definitely need to dedicate more resources when we want to go next year to eleven-something, whichever that might be, so.
Good, thank you, thank you very much. Any questions?
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
That's a good update.
Thanks.
Let's see, next on our agenda is a review of the town manager's goals for two thousand fifteen. In our package tonight, there's a summary that Bob had provided in terms of current state. Same one?
Yeah. There's a two-page summary, it goes the other direction from most of the pages. I don't know if you guys got them in the audience that were, yeah, those things.
Or did you?
Um, yeah, there's a couple anyways. I'll, I'll also have them behind me. It seemed like it was better to put everything in one location, on one document, instead of having a couple of sets, so all it is behind me is organized by the Redding twenty-twenty groups, and then there's some goals at the end that didn't fit into a Redding twenty-twenty group. And I thought it'd be helpful to go through each group and the status, if you will, of some of the goals within there, and I'm reasonably familiar with what John Halsey has been helping with, so I can chime in on some of that as well. For community partners, the first one, that's Dan, Kevin, Jean, and myself. This is an example of us working very independently, I don't think any of us have met as a group before. We're not like the high school kids. That first one there, explore creative public-private ventures, I'm not sure how that concludes, because it's infinite. I think it's lagged somewhat, but I also know that both collectively and individually, we've, we've done something every couple of weeks, some kind of outreach, but it's a difficult thing to measure. So the thing I've described to you in general terms about the EDC flowers is, you know, there's, there's one strong and one other option, to have a private organization take it over. It's taken a lot of behind-the-scenes work, and it's a lot of other complex issues rolled into it, but there's no tangible deliverable, if you will, yet. You know, it's conversation.
Right, but when you're measuring this, what you can do is say, we have implemented a, you know, a partnership.
Contacted these organizations.
You know, we, we've, we've had these discussions, so we've discussed with ten organizations, we've reached conclusion with three, you know, there's, there is some information like that, that doesn't, doesn't obviously recognize the amount of work that was done, but at least has something down there, because it's not that nothing's been done, right?
Right. And to some of the board's recent conversation, you know, I thought we should also discuss RMLD and the schools as partners, in some way, shape, or form.
I agree.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
And I sent the board just a quick email within the last ten days, you know, an example, and it also falls into regionalization. You know, this specifically is public-private ventures, but there's public-public ventures, working with other towns in an informal arrangement, you know, is also very helpful, it achieves the same goal, serves the same purpose.
Bob, to that end, to the extent you have something like this, which is going to be ongoing, no natural end.
Yeah.
And who knows where it leads? Marcy's point on, I think, showing this as by quarter, either outcomes or activity, this is one case where I wouldn't mind an activity chart. It doesn't tell you much about how to value it, but it shows that work went on. Think of it as a line that throughout the year, or maybe just Q1, Q2, Q3, Q4, and you could say, here's five meetings we had with these five stakeholders, here's one outcome that came out of that. Maybe you can value that in dollars, maybe you can value that in time avoided, maybe you can't value it at all, but it, it's the one case where I think I would accept activity as an outcome, as a report of activity, as opposed to dollars and cents.
Well, and because, I mean, you could have, you could have many discussions that lead to nothing, but you've, you've been actually working on this particular goal, and let's recognize that.
Yeah, and the board will also well-understand, some of the discussions, I would say, you know, party A, B, or C.
Sure.
Because they're not gonna want their names out there.
Right, because they don't want their names out, sure.
It's less important that work is going on.
Yeah, okay.
It's that there's progress being made, right?
Yep. And just to point out the format of this document also, the priority, there was basically three groups. Most of them came in as low, meaning sometime this year or the next year. The first two and this one were medium. The future regionalization efforts, we haven't necessarily accomplished future regionalization efforts, but we've pretty much looked stem to stern, and Jimmy, I think animal control is the only thing left that we've kicked the tires on, and there seems to be, I don't know, three or four communities to our north and west that are pretty interested, quite interested, and I think we are, too. So you think it's fair to say in the next year and a half, that may happen? If it's going to happen?
Next year and a half, it'll be, I think, decided.
Yeah.
It'll come to a conclusion.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, our plays are great. I think, I think it's pretty strong likelihood that that can go that way.
And this is a good thing to regionalize, because when you think of it, you know, when dogs decide to wander away, they don't necessarily do it in the few hours that your animal control officer's working, so, you know, it'd be helpful to be twenty-four-seven on this with other communities, basically, to have on-call facilities. Regionalization efforts currently, we have looked at a number of them, as the board is aware, and John Halsey has helped out quite a bit in this. We have abandoned the idea of regionalizing veterans in recreation, we spent a lot of time on both. Neither one of them was just gonna work out. In one case, we were very, well, in both cases, we were very willing, and in both cases, other partners were not, is the bottom line, and I, I really don't know, in either case, that we would've been better off regionalizing versus the other path we'll take, and to regionalize just for its own name is not usually something I'm interested in. And as you know, we've cut back on the scope of the health regionalization, which reminds me, I do want to take another run at the assessors, I have, we postponed formalizing that for more than a year, because we thought the state was gonna change some regs. They have not done that with a new governor, I'm not sure that's gonna happen, so I'll, I'll sit down and chat with Wakefield and see what they want to do. I will tell you, it's, it's gone very well, we're both very happy.
Bob, to that end, is it possible that regionalization efforts that don't appear to bear fruit now, or which have been discontinued, might be reconsidered going forward, either?
Absolutely. Yeah, and there's things that we haven't thought of yet that may well come to pass as being something that's interesting. You know, some of the things we do very much has a town border aspect to it, but a lot does not. One of the areas that was thought for regionalization early on was human health services, you know, share a senior center with someone else. You know, on paper, maybe that works out a certain degree, but in practice, not so much. You know, people identify with their community very strongly, and if you were offering some kind of a function or event, that's one thing. But to offer, you know, routine, you know, lunch, you know, go to Melrose every day for lunch, that's not what people wanted to. So we have found that regionalization does have its limitations. The next one is services and performance measurement, that's, that's a little bit of a bigger bite, and as you can see, there's been some pretty good progress on the highest priorities. The Arcasa model's just fine, thank you. It's really too bad John Halsey could not attend last week, but we met jointly with a large group from Wilmington and North Redding that are interested in getting a little deeper into this themselves, and I made it very clear at the beginning, we were not gonna regionalize with them, because this is one of those things that, the problem doesn't know borders, but the solutions are very much teamwork within a, within a community. And I really have gotten very little feedback. I was supposed to have breakfast with those communities this morning, they put it off a few days because of the snow.
Is their interest more duplicating what we have than regionalizing what we have?
I think their interest, Erica, as Jim would attest, gave a tremendous presentation, a very thoughtful overview. John and Jim especially were there to give more background as to how it was formed, with Pat and Peter, and Jim's been there throughout, and the point was really to show the other two communities, in case they had any doubts, that this is a village effort, you know, this is a big deal. You don't solve it by adding an FTE to your budget and saying, you're done. This is something that needs strong buy-in from law enforcement, from town management, and from school department, and then many portions thereof. So I think the reason that I've heard so little is because they left with their mouths hanging open.
Their old shell shop.
Yeah, I think so, I think so, too. Honestly, Erica gave such a tremendously thorough presentation, she didn't leave hardly any room for questions, and the amount and the volume of work and detail that has gone into this for the last several years was staggering. And we all learned, you know, there's a lot of mistakes made, or at least some made along the way, and we learned from them, and that's to their benefit that now they know, but it's a big deal. If either these, these communities have efforts now, but if they want to go to the next level of Arcasa-like model, it's, you know, it costs a certain amount of money.
It does.
That's not the cost, the cost is the time and the energy, and you have to be all in, you can't have, you know, two out of three wheels working, and the third one doesn't agree.
Bob, to the extent you have hundred percents in some of these, what's your intention in carrying them forward?
Done, in most cases. Public Health Division, you know, that's.
Question?
Yeah, as a general, regarding the admin services director, when you see that person mentioned here, does that mean they're gonna completely take this over, and then we'll cross the line off, or are they gonna join the group?
Join, join.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it'll still be a collaborative thing with the remaining?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thanks.
The Public Health Division, the review is not complete, I suppose, but we have laid out a two, I guess it's a three-year plan. We were supposed to meet on Monday night last night, but we weren't able to do that, so we'll meet at some point in the near future. John Halsey's been very helpful, as has Jean. We've met quite a bit, first with the chair, not to violate the open meeting laws, because they had three members, so we couldn't meet with any two, and then we've met with the board a couple of times. There's a lot of issues to hash through, there's a lot of misunderstandings that the board had. I think the simplest way to describe it is, Redding does things very differently than Melrose in this area, and the Melrose model was trying to be given to them. I don't think it was working too well. And plus, I don't know that it was possible to regionalize health into three communities. Two was okay, you know, three was just too hard. So the budget that is put forth has made some staffing changes, as I described to you a couple of weeks ago, and laid out a plan for even more staffing in the future, you know, should funds become available. And I would say, generally speaking, the Board of Health is on board with this. I'm sure we don't agree perfectly on every single thing, but there's a fair amount of harmony, whereas a few months ago, there was disharmony. Anything else on that, Jean? Emergency management planning, as you can tell from the last three Mondays, that's been working okay. Greg really does a nice job as to all the others involved. One of the things that, that we do a really good job of after the fact is paperwork, and we're hoping from the first storm that Mike has put together his usual spreadsheets, and FEMA says, once again, you're doing an excellent job, here's all the money. We have pretty good luck in that, in that area, but my understanding is they keep changing the rules and the requirements and the game they play, so it's, it's difficult to always keep up with it. But I would, I would think that there is some reimbursement coming, either this fiscal year or next, for some of the last three weeks.
For major events like the ones we're going through now, is there a lessons learned, mistakes made, things to avoid, kind of behavior going at the end of each?
Don't live in the northeast.
But seriously, is there kind of a roll-up after the event to kind of?
You know, we usually do a really good job of meeting after an event, but there hasn't been an after yet.
Yeah.
And we didn't even meet this weekend. You know, we were all taking care of our own roofs and yards and all that, and, you know, we communicated mostly electronically on Sunday, whereas normally, we try to meet. And it was like, let's do the same thing we did the last two times. So, you know, there's a little bit of fatigue in there probably. But, you know, Greg is really good about sitting down with everyone, usually the next day, right away, and saying, what went well, what didn't go well, what did we learn? Has there been anything that you guys have seen that has changed over the last three weeks? I would, I would say, just from my eyes, and I know the situation was much different this time, this storm being so slower, the cleanup was better.
Yeah.
Because it was slower. It's not because the guys did anything differently, they just had more time.
Whereas those blizzards dumped so much snow so quickly, Haven Street was a wreck for one day.
You can keep up with it.
Yeah.
The situation's tough on the guys because it's a long drawn-up, work hours.
True.
Yeah.
But you gotta do that, keep up with it, but it's not as dramatic as problem right away.
Whatever melting agent you're using on the road seems to be very effective at lower temperatures, and I think that's, that's a big success. That's keeping the roads clear at lower temperatures.
I use the straight saw with calcium chloride.
Yeah.
I'll be sectioned, school in, because of limited, you gotta remember, we got a salt shed that holds eight hundred and fifty tons, which is, which is really long. I mean, the actual salt shed is like fifteen hundred, two thousand tons. So it can be very, you know, using the material, you gotta really watch it and look at the forecast coming up. You gotta really, so a lot of times, the side streets will use a mix, salt, sand, mix. Takes longer to work, you don't see black as quickly, but it still does something to help the, help the cause.
And one of the issues, I know the schools have, you know, suffered this year a lot of days off. That's one of the penalties of neighborhood schools with no busing.
Yeah.
You know, if we were bussing kids to schools, all you need is a parking lot. Off you go. For the inventory of services, you know, Gene has said that the MACPC will be done that in March. I think I sent the board over the weekend a couple more grants that we were awarded-
Mm-hmm.
-from the MACPC, which was certainly good news.
Yeah.
Anything else on that one, Gene? Is that the thing that, well, go ahead.
So this is just a way to get down on paper, the services that we provide. We're going to be talking a little bit more about this at Department Heads meeting on Thursday.
Yeah.
We have a template that we're going to be distributing to the department heads to get their help building the inventory. And that'll be our starting point of, you know, what is it that we provide for services? And our goal is to come back to the Board of Selectment with sort of a rough outline of what that looks like. We'd like to do that in March. And then the next milestone will be to have a public forum. We're hoping to do that in April, to hear from the public on what the priorities are for services and maybe start to have some dialogues about alternatives to the way we currently provide services.
So if you remember, I believe it was 2010, there was some financial forums held. And it was more brainstorming, informal, you know, disorganized, if you will. And the community wanted everything on the list. It's always hard to find someone who says, well, I don't want that thing even though I use it. But I think this will be another interesting process, a little more formal for the community to go through.
They want everything on the list they use.
Yeah.
They're perfectly happy to cut those things that those other people use.
And it'll be really interesting to see what kind of a turnout we can elicit. I'm going to have the robotics guys advertising for us.
I think that's a great idea.
Maybe bring a robot there.
Maybe they can bring a robot.
Yeah. This is the kind of thing that I can easily see four people from the community showing up, and then when there's consequences, there's four hundred that said they wished they had come. So we'll have to be careful with this one.
I'm familiar with that actual thing.
Yes.
Very familiar with that.
The Charter Committee's public hearing had two people one of the nights, and they were both in the media, so.
To this end, is there a way to include a measure of the benefit that the service is addressing, to the extent that you've got-
That's the next one, right below it on the list. And that was meant to follow the first thing.
The ways to gather and measure.
I took that as measuring the outcome, not necessarily the audience that it would apply. I'm talking about the actual audience.
Hmm, okay.
Does two percent of the population benefit from it? Does five percent?
That's interesting.
Just then you get into it that way.
What services and then how many people are taking advantage of those services? Or how many benefit from those services?
Particularly if you have a demographic-based benefit, just to pick on it. You might have a hundred percent enrollment penetration, but it's two percent of the population.
Right.
One thing I had, we haven't had a Department Head meeting. I said to the board last time we met, was what is level service? If five people ask for something and you serve all five, and then next year, ten people ask, is level service all ten or just five? I think the town's past definition has been five.
I think it depends. I think it depends, right? It depends what that service is.
It does, but the, but the real answer from a community standpoint is if you're serving everyone who has asked for it and would use it, you continue to do that, even if the demand grows. So particularly going back to that, you know, demographic study of elder services, you know, if it's going to be a population that increases by three quarters, and we're going to provide whatever services it is to whoever wants it, that's a big change. So I think that's a good point, John. I was thinking more along the lines of measuring what the services did, what they, what they provided, as opposed to how many people use them or how many people could use them.
Yeah, this might be an unpopular thought.
But you could do the same.
Yeah, I could imagine if you had a one percent-
Yeah.
...service, you might say, it's one percent, you gotta go-
Yeah.
You gotta find an alternate way to get that done.
Yeah, you're right. That will be unpopular. But it's, you gotta gather the facts.
Well, it probably depends on, on what service it is-
Of course, of course it does.
And whether that's truly a, you know, is it a government service or is that something that truly could come from someplace else, right? So, yeah.
An example of the opposite side of that is the town forest compost drop-off, where it benefits a segment, and you'd argue that the costing could be adjusted to benefit, to reflect the benefit. It's not quite the same thing as discontinuing it. It's actually encouraging it, but funding it a different way.
And the last one, and I didn't get a chance to talk to all of you, Ruth has got a trustees meeting rescheduled from last night, otherwise. She said she'd come whenever she could, but she isn't here yet. But as I believe most of you know, the trustees have agreed to do a master plan, and they want to fund it this spring and complete it by next fall. So by, let's just say by December. They hope to move into the new facility. We're saying publicly June of next year, June of 2016, May, June. So ideally, they'd like to have a master plan done, let's just say in the winter, to give them some time to adjust as, as they may need to. I think that's, you know, that's a really good, good progress in that area. The next one is communication. And this is where our, our new Administrative Services Director will have the most influence, certainly. I'm going to do a couple of these out of order and then lump kind of the rest together. The West Street project is, is finite. It's, the town has done what it needs to do up to date pretty well. I can't remember, I don't think I told you last time, I'm not sure that happened yet, but that we have shut down the contractor, it'd be pretty obvious because of weather.
Till further notice.
Till further notice.
Week of clear.
Yeah. Let's see. Sharon mentioned the current billing and bill printing and mailing policy. There was only one vendor that did that, and they went out of business. So I think our options would be limited. Unless those, one of those kids, you know, will start up a business quickly, there's no competition. I've just always imagined, as a consumer, it'd be awfully nice to get one bill from the town of Reading, however often you need to get it, that had all the different bills you need to pay. But that may never happen. I don't know. It does happen in very small cities and towns in the Midwest, I'm told. I think they're-
Where they have somebody who's printing, who's typing them out.
Yeah, I think so.
Handwritten.
The other three that I skipped have something to do with each other. You know, the board has talked a lot with, with me about communication with volunteer boards. I think the first step was to improve the staffing. So with full-time staff for some of these boards, I think that's a great first step, as is proposed in next year's budget. I think the two below there in green, eleven and twenty-two, you know, what is the role of volunteer boards in community development? And how can we get feedback from the community on both the volunteer boards and, you know, and the staff, and the general direction? I think that last one is going to have to be fine-tuned as to what kind of community feedback you really want, but you hit on some of it a little while ago, John, in terms of what services, you know, do you use? I don't want to survey people to death, but I have to say, the couple, handful of surveys we've done in the past have been extremely helpful, when there's good participation. We almost always get a hundred people to do it. That conservation one, I think, had four hundred. You know, it was very helpful. Onto the fourth one, which is the most complex one because it's got lots of different parts. And I know this is an area that John Halsey's been pretty, pretty involved with. The industrial zoning properties, industrial zone is the area behind the light department. Gene, catch me up to date as I speak, if I'm not up to date, but our MLD's plan was to master plan their facilities, and they had to rearrange their plans as they lost some staff. So they're very far behind where I thought they'd be, and I know where they wanted to be on that. Have you talked to Colleen lately at all about that?
The last time it came up was, I think, at the September South meeting.
Okay.
And she said, exactly what you just said, that it's on, the whole thing's on hold.
Okay. And they're the linchpin of that, plus the next issue, DPW facilities. I did get a plan, I'm going to say two or three weeks ago, from George. I can't remember exact numbers, but I didn't like the eighteen million, so they came back with a nineteen and a seventeen or something, two options.
Sixteen or twenty-two.
Yeah, okay. Two options that were roughly in the same ballpark. As, as the board is aware, and if Bill's watching at home, he can come down and correct me tomorrow, the cemetery trustees have voted an article on the town meeting to fund a cemetery garage, a two million. To me, that's still part of the discussion with the public works facilities, whether it does or doesn't belong there. I think it does, but I'm, I'm open-minded on that. I think the whole thing is turned over to a building committee. And I think, even though the AG has not approved that yet, I'd like you to, probably in your late February, early March meeting, start advertising and deciding what you want for criteria for a building committee. And at least one of those meetings should be a joint meeting with the school committee. I think their timing is a little bit better in March, just because of school vacation.
Bob, I would assume something like that, where it's not execution. We haven't decided to spend sixteen or nineteen or twenty-two. I would, I would have thought the building committee would have been on the execution side, not on the strategy side.
That's not the way the bylaw committee envisioned it, for the reason that they don't want a lot of momentum built up on things that aren't agreeable to the building committee, quote unquote, as the gating factor.
I could see that.
Yeah.
I think that's stemmed from that, if you've got a lot of different things that you know are going to be coming down the pipe, but you want to be able to have one group that has some understanding of the fact that there's maybe something in the schools and something with public works and something with the library and can, can see how they, they all fit together.
I get that, but it all comes down to what is, what it is.
Right.
When, when is it ripe enough to hand over to the-
Yeah, and having talked to some of the interested groups, they're not interested in turning it over too early. They haven't really fleshed out the, or maybe at all.
Or at all.
They just haven't fleshed out the idea. And it is a fine line.
Yeah.
But there's no reason that you can't form it and understand-
I agree.
Because it's going to take a while to advertise and, and get membership, certainly. And I, honestly, I think the, the membership you, you end up staffing it with are going to in large measure answer all those policy questions. They will decide. The bylaw that was written gives them great authority, if you follow it right to the letter.
I know, I know.
Maybe too much, we'll see. It really depends on how it's staffed, and, you know, what kind of people you have there. If it's not working properly in the future, we'll adjust it. That's, that's not hard. The thing that they won't do very easily is, is run amok and just spend money because they can't. All they can do is plan and recommend. Town meeting has to spend the money. So as long as there's good transparency and good reporting back from them to everyone, schools and town especially, I think it'll be fine. But to find sort of the neutral parties that have the big picture, that'll be the trick, and have the time to put into it.
This is going to be a time sink.
You could easily see two projects going on, and forget the library project, we're leaving that the way it is. And that's a big time sink on its own, I can tell you. If you have two projects going on at once, it's going to be a real big commitment for, you know, people that are volunteers. We'll see. Recreation facilities, I won't say as much because John Halsey's, is leading that charge. And that's going to be an area where I'm sure the Rec Committee and John Feudo and John Halsey are not going to want to turn anything to a building committee until they really have to. And, you know, and I'm okay with that. There's a lot of ideas. We've gone on some site visits. There's a lot of very exciting revenue opportunities out there. But beyond that, it's, it's really in the talking, in the planning stage, as far as I know. John can give us a better update when he's back. Community planning, the next one. I don't know, Jim, do you remember any high priorities for PTTF that are unaddressed? I guess the downtown parking one is still out there because we haven't got any sense of what the demand is because we don't have all the tenants in yet.
Well, yeah, and I think part of, part of the idea with that was to wait until Charles Street Block was occupied and see what the impacts are, if, if there are impacts to be addressed. There was, there was a thought before it was occupied that, you know, the end was coming when that opened and that there would be no room for any cars downtown anymore. But as we've found, you know, many of the businesses are running and they're flourishing and, you know, everything's pretty much status quo. People are finding places to park and they're using the businesses.
So do we have on the list to come up with a new name for PTTF, which is really completely unwieldy?
We do.
We do, but we haven't any suggestions yet.
EFF fifteen.
Do we have a meeting this Thursday? No, is it next, next week?
Uh, next, uh-
Next Wednesday.
So you, you're on vacation.
Twenty-fifth, right, yeah.
It gets next week. Well, we'll figure it out. Affordable housing, I don't know, that's one of those, you know, like the first one we talked about, it's never going to be done, I suppose.
But, but that's probably like the other one, where if they're listing what those activities are that are going on towards that ten percent housing is probably a good thing.
Yeah, that's-
There you have a meeting.
Because there's activity, I know you've, you've discussed different things that have been sort of in play or discussed and, yeah.
You think it's, you know, remaining confidential about the party is one thing, but is there much you could really say about the locations even? That just gives it away. You know, we've had a handful of meetings with some really interested people that are interested in addressing the shortfall there.
I don't think you need to talk about the location.
Okay.
It's really more of a matter of, you know, you know, three meetings around one location or, you know, something like that, really, that just gives you some sense that there's progress being made, right?
Could you just talk about the upside opportunity in terms of what it might yield without specificity to who and what?
Yeah, probably.
Number of units or something.
Yeah, add everything together, we're certainly in the hundreds of units, easily.
The housing plan that we put together a couple of years ago has a little bit of a roadmap for how we thought we might be able to get there. A couple of projects have fallen off of the list, and a couple of new ones have gone on. So one way it might be to take that template from the housing plan and just update it, you know, looking forward.
Yeah, scratch out the ones that didn't pan out, add the ones that did, and some other important milestones, like, you know, visibility to another couple hundred units or-
Mystery Project A, B, C, you know, until they're ready to be named.
My favorite was the five hundred units on stilts in conservation land.
I see some roadblocks ahead for that.
Oh, maybe one or two.
Mosquitos.
I don't think that's what I was talking about.
The next two, I, I guess, were effectively done. We've implemented, you know, the sixth best program and complete streets. The real trick there is funding. The state is still a little disorganized on that, and they financially are not much shaped to improve on that. But as soon as they're ready, we'll be right at their doorstep. And likewise, the bike and, and PED plan, I guess the South Main Street diet is still on the drawing board. It's still going to be discussed. It really fits pretty, pretty closely together with complete streets. You could really merge those two at this point. Terms of policy, that's certainly where a lot of effort and time has been spent. Zoning bylaw, I'd really like to put a hundred there, but it can't since it's not done, and ninety-five is probably an exaggeration, but it feels like it's-
I was going to say ninety, ninety-five seems a little, a little, a little higher.
Only the details are left.
Yeah.
Is the thought now that it'll be finished in November or just might be finished in November? I guess you don't know yet.
Yeah, we, we had asked for feedback from the boards.
Yeah.
I, I think yesterday was the deadline, so maybe-
I think Laura sent it out.
It got postponed to next week or whenever the next-
Laura sent it out again over the weekend.
It was postponed to March.
March second.
No.
It's March second.
Yeah, might be right, yeah.
So that's kind of what we wanted to hear about, what collectively the goals were for how we move forward. But CPDC has an interest in taking a couple of manageable bites to the November town meeting, whatever that might end up being.
And what's left is reasonably divisible. There's, there's not a lot that has to go together. You could do signed bylaws all by itself. Okay. Permanent building committee, I mean, other than Form One, you've done everything else. The AG has to just approve it. That was an interesting process with the bylaw committee. There was lots of twists and turns along the way. And I think it turned out pretty well, though. Review other town bylaws, I don't even remember what I was thinking when I added that on, so I don't know.
What other town bylaws are there? If you did zoning, I guess, I guess the rest of the-
There are, general bylaws. You know, the general bylaws were recodified a few years ago.
Yeah.
Laura and Peter were part of that, the Selectmen were part of that.
But I think that was strictly the renumbering, rewording.
Well, that's what I thought. Not so much.
Oh, really?
Yeah, there's been edits made.
We've, we've learned through town council that some things have changed.
Oh.
And we can't always, one of the questions that came up at the last town meeting, we can't really duplicate and understand why a change was made. One of the discussions that came through in the November town meeting, the answer is we can- One of the discussions that came through in the, um, November town meeting, uh, the answer is we can track the change, we know when it happened. There is no institutional memory as to why, it's, it's the, um, uh, gun bylaw thing. You know, why did we, I don't even remember, Jim, do we add or subtract a couple of words?
Continous sport and, and then chapter one thirty-one. And when you read it, I think some of the consti, some of the conversation around it was that, when, and I don't know why that language is added, and I, I don't have any knowledge of that.
And I haven't asked Pete.
But what it does is it, it, it more narrowly defines, uh, what parts of chapter one thirty-one, the hunting, um, statutes can be used. We're only hunting and sporting. There are other segments to that, um, chapter, you know, so, so whoever put it in there or however it got put in, it, it was, it more narrowed the scope of one thirty-one in that particular context. Not, you couldn't expand it.
Right.
Which I think, I think it was a misunderstanding that that somehow expanded the use of one thirty-one.
Right, I think that eliminates things like trapping and stuff like that.
Exactly, fishing, trapping, all kinds of things, and it very particularly says only hunting and sporting.
Right.
But as opposed to the zoning process you went through and, and the charter process to, to a far lesser degree, in addition to lack of institutional memory, there's a lot of, not a lot of notes. There's not a lot of trails left behind as to why did we do this? Whereas you guys, practically every comma and period you change, you know, there's a footnote somewhere. Which was good, you know, it's good to have that. Community Preservation Act, uh, the answer is no, you know, if we're going to ask the community for money, it's not going to be for that.
I'm happy to see that. That's a very specifically focused.
Yeah. Well, it's gotten a little broader lately, but still is certainly focused. Technology master planning, uh, our technology director and Kevin and operations specialist Gail have worked on that. They just had a phone call last week. It's difficult to talk to someone in Florida right now, though, I have to say. The new hire will finish this off, if you will. This is another thing that'll never really be done, but every five years, I think it's a really good idea to do this. And just to shock Sharon, I can tell you right now that Munis' shelf life is probably five years from now. When, um, Microsoft bought them, eight years ago, nine years ago, um, I talked to someone in Texas. I said, "We're thinking about buying this." He says, "I promise you for ten years, you're all set, and after that, Microsoft's going to put out their own thing."
Yep, they always do.
And, you know, they did that down in Florida as a test case. Florida made all the municipalities shift over to this thing, it didn't go well at all. So hopefully that delayed it another five years, but, you know, that's what's going to happen.
Thank God they didn't buy quick.
Good reason not to be upgrading to that advanced SQL stuff that everybody else isn't on, right?
You know, you go off the DIY program and you're subject to someone else's market cycles. So, it's a good product, its support has never been quite as good as it should be, in my opinion. But.
They never are, though.
Yeah, I, I suppose. Yeah, it's certainly very complete. When I think back to how we used to do things, it's really kind of horrifying that, you know, we didn't run our ship aground. Having no idea how much money was spent or how much money was left. Jimmy's laughing because he, he knows. And, and, and the, and the old, "Well, put it over there, there's still money left in that account. Let's spend it out of there." So, we've come a long way.
Just an editorial, I think Microsoft's made a tactical or strategic decision to focus on the glitz and walk away from their business customers. Just looking at their last release of Windows.
I haven't seen it.
Windows eight and eight-one, yeah. Disaster, it's going to be replaced by ten, it was so bad, they had to skip a number.
That's the end of the Reading twenty-twenty's, we'll circle back and have a short discussion, but let me just finish off some other goals below there. And generally, most of these were low priority. The FY sixteen budget will finish off the first two goals, more or less. Selectmen's policies, we mentioned it once. We did organize it, I should say we, I mean Paula, did a really nice job organizing them, as well as the town manager policies. Should anyone choose to look at those, you know, they're now available. For the town manager policies, we are, um, Judy Perkins, our HR director, has set up an employee committee to review some of the policies, personnel policies in particular. I would hope to come back to a, a board sometime this summer with suggested changes, because it's, it's your call on them. And, you know, beyond that, I'll leave it up to the employees to, uh, to look at it. The charter's done. We're still trying, trying to avoid sending out nine thousand copies, but I think we're going to have to mail out nine thousand copies to satisfy the, uh, letter of the state law. So, um, can't send out a link, can't send out a summary, have to send out the whole charter. And the real trick will be.
And there's no way to get a waiver on that at all?
No. Well, if, can I say this? If we're, if we're going to spend that kind of money on gender specificity, I want to know what that number is. Before we, no, I'm serious, before we undertake that effort, I think we should report it back to town meeting.
Well, it's going to cost you, I don't know, figure a buck each to mail it, it's pretty, well, maybe even more.
And we have to do it again next year to make all these gender neutral changes.
That's, that's a different.
That's what I'm talking, next year.
That, that's, that is definitely food for thought in the future, absolutely.
And the reason you can't download just a link or email and that link is why?
It's not legally, it's not, you're not.
State law. I've talked a lot to Ray about this and, we're even constrained as to how we can communicate it, to some degree, because you can't influence. So I wrote up a sample, I think only Laura and Ray were copied. I said, you know, "How about this sentence?" And he struck a couple of words and put it in his own. He said, "You were trying to influence the voters, weren't you?" I was like, "No, I really wasn't." But, once I saw his point, yeah, I kind of was. I was, thought I was stating facts, but no, I was really giving an opinion.
You get around that by doing like the state ballot question, you have a pro and a con side and there's a?
No, the town is not allowed to do either. We have to drive the truck right down the middle of the road and state in, in factual language and honestly, in a way that's going to be hard to understand. I would like to use simple language and explain it. So what I, what I am hoping for at the end of the day is to have information on the website to help anyone who's interested, which will be a very low percent. But at least say, you know, there's a charter, whatever it was, guide we had, and there's some background written up. If you're really interested, go read that stuff.
How would you possibly quantify the con side in, in the same spirit of being neutral?
You know, Ray took a stab, which I thought was a good idea, at summarizing what the changes were, and, you know, he's probably got the right perspective of any of us, as an outsider looking in. He said, "These are the important things." There weren't very many. Board of assessors, change from appointed to elected. I don't even remember the other ones, but, um, town manager appointing the appraiser was another one. There weren't very many, there were really changes.
The ombudsman, not being, no, that wasn't even something that he?
Nope. No, and, you know, the twenty-eight to thirty-five day, I don't remember if that was one of his fines, but they're really very minor things. But I'm really a little uncomfortable mentioning like three things or five things without also saying, "Look, there's a lot more information available if you're really interested." So I don't want people to say, "Well, you didn't tell me about this," you're cherry picking.
So, uh, we're presuming the AG will approve in time for it to go on the ballot?
Um, I, I met, uh, because of the library thing on Friday, all three of our reps were there, and I asked them what the timeframe was on the legislative piece, and they hoped February. But, kind of one of those. So we're going to send out, I have a question in to Ray, so I'm not sure he's going to agree with what I'm going to say, but my intention is to send out the whole charter as is, as is proposed. With a letter explaining which sections the town by itself does not have the authority to change. Now, we're going to have to send it out in a way that's almost for sure going to be before we know when the legislature has approved it. So we're going to have to word it carefully. If the legislature approves it in time, and I'm not exactly sure what that means, other than clearly by April, the vote of the town, of the town will pass the entire thing. If the legislature sends it back slower and asks us to put it to a vote, we may have to decide whether to have two different years of votes or just skip the first year. But we'll have already sent out the charter, so that's going to be tough. That's something we talked about on Friday. They have no sense of what the odds are of whether they will ask us to vote on it or not. And I said, "Look, can you, can you just get the thing passed and ask us to vote like in the next two weeks? Because that'd be fine. We don't mind doing the vote, we just need to know fast." So, it's, it's a real, you know, catch as catch can problem, like you were with zoning. What happens if this section passes and this one doesn't? You know, how do we leave the document, so? Uh, I don't want to cause confusion, again, most people are going to throw the thing away, I, I probably would. But you can't have a lot of complicated explanation about what the thing is. Here's the new charter. By the way, you don't have the authority by yourself to do all of it, the legislature's involved. End of story, on these sections. But you have to follow state law, and you have to have said whatever it is, you know, that the law dictates.
Can the attorney general's approval come after we close the warrant but before the vote is taken? How, how does that play in with these other variables?
I, I think it's independent. I don't think it, I think the, the act of the legislature is all by themselves, they will do whatever they do. I believe the House and the Senate will take it up, one right after the other, I believe it's going to start in the House. Brad has taken the lead on it.
I'm talking about the other level of review by the AG? That, just to approve what we passed?
That shouldn't be a factor. That'll happen before town meeting. I'm trying to think, they've finished September, they've finished November.
Before the election.
I'm sorry, before the election, yeah. They have not finished January yet, so.
Okay.
Yeah. And we didn't ask for any special haste in any of the January ones, um, other than the West Side or somewhere else. I don't expect that to take much longer, though. Library building project, you know, it's, it's now in the scary part, it's being, it's being built or just about. You know, the planning is, is almost done. You know, make no mistake about it, it's a lot of work. Obviously, we're not out there building the thing, but, um, you know, Joe Huggins especially, uh, and Ruth is now going to weekly construction meetings. It's a big, it's a big time use, and it's going to be that way for sixteen, eighteen months.
Bob, in the Thursday notes, I think, maybe I'm misremembering the package, there was discussion about the last library building committee meeting, maybe it was from David Hutchinson, that referenced, um, contingency funds and use of them, as they got into it, whether those funds became available.
Yeah, we had a library building committee meeting, I guess it was last Thursday night, and, and Karen Herrick is the FinCom liaison, and I think I straightened out, they hadn't met since October, this big gap.
October twenty-five.
Yeah.
Wow.
And there was really, there was no reason for them to meet, other than that was kind of, you know, a long time. I, I think, I'll speak for, in what she said that night, that she's kind of on board and satisfied now. What we have is, we have an internal Munis accounting system for the project, which is obviously keeping track of everything. And we have a project manager doing it a slightly different way. And so what we've asked him to do is talk to her and put it together, so that we can all be using the same language and the same figures. So I'll just give you an example that I, I found over the weekend. The architect has a invoice that he shows of spending eight hundred and nineteen thousand to date on the project. We show eight hundred and sixteen thousand. There's no reason they should be different. There's no such thing as a two or three thousand dollar bill that's different. So, I don't know. You know, there's all these little minutia things, but the point is, we want to have a real, simple, transparent document to give to everyone, starting with the library building committee. You know, as short a summary as is reasonable, you know, a couple pages. It's way too early to say anything other than the project is, is very much on track. And, um, all the ad, ad alts were added in, because the bid was, the bids were so low, the winning bid was so low, that the whole list of other things, if we had extra money to do, was added. So, you know, it's, it's, it's in as good a financial shape as it could be. Now, having said that, they haven't really found anything yet, so we'll see. For long-term liability planning, I, I think we're effectively done on that also. Our OPEB funding mechanism is seemingly well-accepted, even if FinCom wouldn't, um, call it a policy. You know, the pension funding is, is moving along at four and a half percent a year, which is a little on the high side, but it's what the pension board wants. And the health insurance RFP, you, you heard about it, was, was very scary. The, you know, the cover bids were horrific. But it is what it is, we did the best we could, and, um, we're, we're getting a good deal for where we are. You know, to think of an eight point two percent increase as being really good news is really hard to say, but that's, that's where we are. They had said that by the third week of February, they'd be in a position possibly to quote a second year, so I'll ask them, maybe I'll just wait till the first week of March. For FinCom's two-year budgeting, I think that'll be helpful to just have a cap.
I'm, uh, familiar with one of the, um, MIAA principals, she's, attends the same church I do, and I, she made a point to telling me how well Reading is regarded among, uh, that group in terms of being a role model. You know, they kind of, I think you've said this previously, that they view the town as, um, kind of example of what's done right, and, uh, great, great comfort in working with us and very predictable.
Yeah. Well, at the, we meet usually in this room, or in the room next door, with all the light department school and town unions. And, um, usually the HR director and myself, sometimes John or Colleen will come. There has always been a good level of communication. Now there's a brutal level of honesty. None of us have time to waste. Here's a, here it is. So, um, you know, I, I really appreciate the fact that we're very lucky to have the union representation we do that understands this is not a us against them issue. Uh, one side's paying seventy-one percent, one side is paying twenty-nine percent, it's, it's a common problem, it's a common, you know, issue. And every single union in there is really, really good to deal with on this issue. And that's why Maya holds us in high regard, is because they see the cohesiveness. And the fact that Maya will come in and say, "Well, let's have a meeting so that we can tell you what we're going to say before we say it to the union." "Oh, don't waste your time, just come in and talk to all of us." They don't have other communities like that. You know, it's just, it's a good relationship. Sharon has a couple of things, she talked about one of them tonight, Gatsby fifty-four, does that need town meeting approval?
I think it's course, I can.
Okay, that's what I thought, I was just thinking that as I was listening. She's fully reviewed the fee structure and procurement's on hold, just to see what FinCom.
Does that include the issue of the depot stickers?
That's the only one that the board didn't really address. And I wrote to the board a couple of weeks ago, saying, I think it was too late for this budget cycle. But it's something that, in, in time for next January first, stickers, which, you know, get ordered in the fall.
So this is the FY sixteen status? When it says low, it means it's low for FY sixteen?
Yes, for this, yes, for this FY fifteen year. You know, it, it's,
Sixteen.
I don't know how you solve it, I mean, it's, it's two different things, it's compost and it's, you know, depot parking.
Maybe you have to stick.
Depot parking today wasn't worth a lot, but most days it is.
But to address it for sixteen, the threshold is passed, is that what you're saying?
No, uh, well, Jimmy, you order the things around November?
We're in January, in summer, so, um, stickers, so, we order, actually order the physical stickers.
That's to be for next year.
You know, October, November.
So we should put a tickler in the file for September to bring this up?
I figured at this point, you know, wait till the election, the next board makes the call, sometime in the summer, you can have a discussion. There's, there's a few different ways that are quite different, you could go in this, so. And I don't, I couldn't think of any third thing or fourth thing to add in, it's like, those are the two things. You know, they're together now, they don't have to be. And, and the question for the board is really, is it something you want to tackle before you have an override discussion? Because it is a source of revenue that has not yet been fully vetted, I'll say. That's where we are on all the goals. I don't know if there's anything the board wanted to especially talk about tonight or plan to meet on.
So, so, I'm sorry, Bob, can you just touch one more time on why the library building project is listed as a hundred percent? Because that, that, that's not bringing everything else on here I'm like in agreement on, but that's kind of, I'm not, I'm not following that one.
I imagine that the library building project that was written up was the planning stage, and, you know, having a committee re-engineered, having the plans all drawn up, and, and off you go. You know, if it's really to finish the project, obviously, it's well short of a hundred, it might be around twenty. Depends on how you, how you view it.
I think that we need to have your oversight in this.
Oh, that doesn't mean I'm stopped.
Right, but it, but, but if it's not on here, it's not part of your goals, right?
No, it, it still is.
I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Is it fair to record it at a hundred percent?
Uh, you know, I don't know. Let me look.
I mean, the building's not even, the spade's just.
But you can imagine it, can't you? It's too bad Ruth's not here. She, uh.
Well, how was the ground breaking?
It was really nice.
Was there ground to break, or?
Um, no, there was some.
Snow shovel.
Was it a shovel to break?
There was a snow shovel. DPW brought some ground in to break.
You, you took all the shovels, right?
I, I wish I could have been there, I unfortunately had to be in town, so.
It was very cold, so we did it in the Port Co. share, don't ask me how to spell that.
Little carport offer.
I don't know, forty people, would you say? Fifty?
Oh, that's nice.
Oh, nice.
It was very nice.
Turned out, excellent.
So what, what we had listed, for what that's worth, under the library building project, was transparency dash neighborhood impacts, comma, budget slash financial. And then. was transparency-neighborhood impacts, comma, budget slash financial, and then part two, temporary space.
Yeah, I don't think that's done. The temporary space is done.
Well, the neighborhood impacts, we've had neighborhood meetings. I mean, obviously, there's still impacts to be felt, but, you know, we had a pretty nice neighborhood meeting over at the police station a few weeks back.
But that's a prep meeting, right? The neighborhood impact will be as built, not as designed.
And we gave them, what they mostly needed was contact information. When you have something going wrong, here's the guy's cell phone. Call him 24 hours a day. You know, that's the way it is. So I suppose we should just add on to...
Even from the budget perspective, I would say.
Yeah, it's a little early to be saying, to do a victory lap on the budget here.
Absolutely. We don't know what they're going to find.
Right, all you need is one U.S.T. or some major construction issue.
Well, now we're really into the project management phase.
Yeah.
As opposed to what was listed here, the way I would look at it. Budget financial is fair to keep on there.
One, we could bring it up now or bring it up in the 2020 discussion, but I've had a chat with a couple of the school committee members, and visited the school committee, I don't know, three weeks ago now, to raise this thought of centralized, examine and exploit whatever centralized activities there might be around technology, or legal, or, 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 or. And I'm sure that they're small, because in the grand scheme of things, the two groups do very different things, but that's not a reason to postpone looking at it. I haven't heard from John where his head's at, but I think the school committee will eventually get around to chatting about it. But that might actually be an objective that we want to formalize, to look at whether there's more efficiency to be gained by having one tech team versus two, one legal team versus two. I guess we already have one benefits. And I'm not aware enough to gauge what other opportunities there might be, but I got to believe with two groups, two parallel groups, there's more. And again, that's in the spirit of getting it done before we go to the voter and say, "We need an override."
One of the issues that would come up, and I haven't had a chance to, I'll see John on Thursday morning. The towns that have done that have had mixed results. The towns that have done it well, one of the keys seems to be sharing physical location. Being the same building, superintendent and the town manager, whatever.
Worse integration.
Yeah. Any function that's going to be integrated, I mean, you know, again, we have Gail from Florida, so it's not perfect. It can be far, but if you're going to really try to harmonize two groups like that, they got to run into each other a lot.
That makes perfect sense.
That does make sense.
And look around the building here. It's not happening in this building.
Plus, she gets to be, economy's a scale of secretarial...
Look, that makes perfect sense. You can't have two arms of the same organization completely ignorant of each other. I'd support a concept like that.
Yeah, and I'm not familiar enough with central office, Sharon probably is, to understand all the different jobs and roles, to know, is there an improvement to be made? This certainly is in communication. In the H.R. area, I mean, it comes up almost every day.
I feel like the H.R. is one of those areas where it seems like there could be some, something to be gained.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I will tell you point-blank that we need another H.R. person. We can't afford it in FY '16, but the next year after that, we need to add a benefits person, period. And if we can't do that, I'm just not sure we can function and keep serving. Because, again, we're also serving a light department. The amount of people being served out of our H.R. office, which is one person and one clerical person, is intense. And when she gets involved in projects, it's very hard to leave any bandwidth. You know, you can imagine from your own jobs and your own lives, what the benefits area is like these days, how complex it is. And we're dealing with retirees. There's just a lot going on. There's a lot of rules changing. There's a lot of things to be addressed of. We do a pretty good job, but I have to say we're understaffed. And whether combining that with the schools would be beneficial, I don't know exactly what it is they do and how they're staffed. I mean, I know one person, but I don't fully understand. We've never done a study to list, you do this, we do this. We seem to be getting more and more to do in this building, I will say that. And I've said that to John.
The outcome of such a work might be that you segregate the behavior differently. Today, you both do it. It's not how do you work better together. Why don't you do it all, and we'll, you know, build it into our budget, but we benefit from your focus on that target topic. But this is more making it a goal to have that dialogue and get that list of what the areas might be.
You know, the furthest along we got with John and with his predecessor, Pat, was technology. And that's been a keen interest of John's also. But Pat started off the discussion saying, "Tell me how to make this better." And we had our two network administrators in the room at the time, Matt and Kevin. And, you know, a couple of us said a few words, and then they talked the whole rest of the time, and we had a hard time understanding anything they said. It was Peter, John, Doherty, and myself, and the two network guys. But what was very clear was, it was extremely helpful for both those guys to talk to each other. They already had a good relationship. They already helped each other. But to formalize it just in that room that day and see that, oh, the bosses think this is a good idea, really helped. And when you think of, you know, technology in any organization, it's always the thinnest staffed at the top.
Yeah, you spend nothing on it, you'll never know.
Yeah. So I'm more familiar with that, and I can tell you that there are obstacles, because they use technology in the classroom very differently than the way we use it. But there's also a big difference in our library. We have staff technology and public technology. The library is very protective of their public technology. The foundation or the friends fund it, and they decide what to do, because they're in touch with their public. But we control the funding and the rollout of staff, because we want to all have staff do the same things. The schools, that divide is much larger. You know, all the teachers, how much freedom do they have? I don't really know now, but I can tell you two or three years ago, when Matt Wilson was here, he was told to support any device that's brought into school, period. Just imagine, with all the kids and all the teachers. So, you know, it's certainly an area for discussion. There's an opportunity to improve your security and your sense of it in terms of backup. I don't think we're so great at that. But in terms of saving money, I seriously doubt you're going to save a nickel in technology.
I don't think it's necessarily savings as much as it is operational efficiency. And that eureka moment you had, you just described with two technology guys, I expect you'd get the same sense of, ah, there is a benefit here. By bringing any two peers together in an organization and saying, "You have an opportunity to work together. Would you like to come back and describe what you might get out of that arrangement?" That's really the genesis of the goal.
I'll try to think of other areas that kind of go together. There's a few, but they are kind of few and far between. It's generally central office down there.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Okay. Any of the department heads here have anything to add in any of the areas? By all means. You could be home shoveling. What's going to happen Thursday night?
The last report was between six inches depending on the track. It's probably a pileable event. Hopefully, we can...
I'm sorry, move it down tonight, and then we'll put it...
Isn't there one looming on Sunday as well?
Yeah, potentially. They don't want to talk about it.
Because nobody wants to hear about it anymore.
Exactly, yeah.
That's right. But there's some potential that...
My personal snow has no place to go. It's already above my head.
I posted on Facebook on a step ladder today, knocking the pile.
The one observation I'll make on goals from a high distance is, there's too much going on, and yet not enough. It's in one of those, you know, there's too many balls in the air, and you're not accomplishing... Well, we have accomplished some things.
I think there's actually a good level of accomplishment.
The zoning and the charter coming in at the same time was huge. And just basically, you know, pushed a lot of other stuff aside. The area where I feel like, you know, I've really let the board down is some of the real estate stuff. It's just fallen by the wayside, honestly. You know, it's not a core mission of government. It would have been a nice thing to do. Maybe it would have helped some of these longer-term goals, but just haven't gotten anywhere.
We're not done yet.
And we're not done yet, and it's really hard to deal with really long-time horizon issues that you have to, when you've got so many other short ones.
Firefighter. Looking at this summary in pages two and three, I have to say that on par, I am pleased and, I think, impressed with the level of progress.
Yeah, I think this is...
We started this process, you did describe that it was a daunting list, that everything was likely going to be high, because we'd already called the lows out, and we forced the process to get some lows and mediums back in. And the fact that you've got a goodly number of activities above 50%, and I concur with, with the potential exception of the library, most of them, that's a remarkable state for the end of year one. That's remarkable.
Yeah.
Now, it's probably also true that going's going to get tougher here. The easy ones have gotten farther along, and what's left is harder, so... But I don't think we, I don't think we could have done much better. The town could have done much better.
I'll tell you, from a meeting we had, I can't remember if it was a week or two ago, Dan was part of it, to hire the administrative services director. You know, as that's been more fleshed out over the last two or three months, starting with the charter committee, it's going to be a huge benefit. If we pick the right person, and they do a good job, it's going to fill a lot of the gaps in on this that are communication-oriented, I'll say. And I will say, we have some impressive resumes.
So where are you on that process? So you have, you're doing the resume?
We're doing the resume ratings this week.
Excellent. And you said you have a good number of resumes?
Approaching 30.
Wow.
Yeah, and virtually all of them are qualified.
Will you try to knock that list down?
Half, yeah, half of it. I think we decided...
For interview process?
Yeah, I think we decided we wanted, it's such a personal job, personable job, that we want to see more people than you might normally want to see. Gene and Jimmy are helping.
Have you at all considered doing phone screening interviews for the first, you know, the first time around, so that you can, there will be people, you will probably be able to tell just from on the phone that they're not a good fit?
It's a low-cost way to cover a lot of ground.
It's a low-cost way to cover a lot of, and less time as well.
You know, what it's going to come down to...
It's pretty traditional now.
When we all meet again, I don't know if we scheduled it, is what's the next list look like? Is it 12 people, or is it 25?
And you can even do a group phone interview, you know?
We thought of using the police department's approach, which is to run everyone through a hazing process.
That's what they do, right?
Hazing's a bad word, Bob.
I was going to say, hasn't that, isn't that like...
Don't say that.
I said amazing process. We thought that many different hands-on and eyes-on these people was a good idea, including people who are not part of our group.
Absolutely.
And then you just gather all the feedback, because this is going to be, you know, a department head with a lot of interesting divisions and interesting division heads. But this is going to be a figure in the community, basically, to some degree. Okay, thanks.
With the time that remains, would the board entertain me to walk through the presentation from Reading Schools on the naming process that they adopted? I know Mr. Halsey's in here. John and I have already spoken on this, so...
Is there any opportunity to delay?
Are you...
I'm sort of losing steam. I can tell you that you will not get my brain power on this call.
And I have yet to really look at it all. I'm sure in the light that you have, I think...
It's light reading, and you...
Probably will. Which has not happened yet.
No problem. So go back to shoveling.
Yeah, that's been part of the problem. John, is there anything I can do to help the board?
You might read it, Bob, and discern from your perspective what you'd want to see, either added or deleted, from the document.
And I'd like to look at the two involved, what Bob provided tonight, from a previous book.
Actually, what's here is actually more expansive. This is actually trying to carve out, Peter's work was a more expansive role for the selectmen in terms of all things naming, and all things streets, and all things... We're narrowly focused on a naming of a physical entity, not a sidewalk, not a roadway, not a... Peter's, this is actually a third perspective on the problem, which is, what should the selectman role be in the broader context of nominating somebody, recognizing somebody, permanently naming something? We're trying to do something much more narrow around naming an entity in the town.
But should we be? I mean, it may be that it's a good idea to come up with that law to a policy now.
I think it is, but I think you're absolutely right. However, there's a time-perishable aspect that is being, that the current question before us has, that would say, take it out of order, or take it ahead of formalization.
One aspect of the naming is when multiple individuals are good candidates for the name, and almost co-equals, how do you handle that? Do you do multiple names?
Well, it's funny you say that, so the...
For instance, the two names on the Martin Field.
Well, there's a proposal to address that, because one of those predates the other.
Right.
And the proposal, at least in my mind, works. I thought what you're describing is two co-equals appear at the same time, and neither's got precedence in time. I think that's the nature of the question before us. This is a singular event, and ideally, it's a singular individual. It's not a question of which of these three individuals gets this benefit, which is what the schools is challenged with. So, anyway, we'll take it up our next meeting. Hopefully, we'll end as early as we did tonight.
Okay, I'll put it on your next agenda. As you'll notice, your agendas in the next two months are pretty light. I'm not sure why, other than I'm probably just too snow-weary. But there's a lot of room for some things there. I know at one point, we spoke of having a joint RMLD meeting. Is that something the board's still interested in? Do you want to wait till the investigation is finished, or does that have any play?
I don't know. Do you really need to know? This is about integration.
What I heard tonight is way more than I've heard the whole time. I'm not staying away.
Me too. But to some extent, this is about building bridges and trying to get common, as opposed to waiting till the dust settles.
I think we want to be clear about what the agenda is, and have that preset in advance. And so if that can't be done, then I don't, I'm not in agreement with having just a group meeting where we all walk in and kind of not sure what we're addressing or what we're trying to accomplish.
With that in mind, why don't we all send independently our thoughts as to what such a meeting might contain to Bob? Maybe you could assemble...
Probably the best, most practical answer is you have a chair, chair, general manager, town manager meet first, and try to hammer out what is or is not going to be covered, and see if there's agreement.
I'd be willing to do it.
No reason that can't be done.
Okay. If there are other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
How about the school committee? Do you have any desire to sit down with them on anything? I haven't been paying attention. I know you've been talking.
Absolutely. I mean, this, look, we're walking into financial headwaters here, and it's all hands on deck in terms of trying to find new and creative thoughts, so we're all in the boat together. I don't see why we wouldn't.
Yeah, I agree we are.
And, you know, I sense...
But this is different than a financial forum. This is, you know, FinCom can attend if they want, but it's not a financial meeting.
Right, right.
It's more of a policy meeting, I would say.
There's probably a little bit of strategy, too. By that, I mean, and I'll just speak freely, I understand that Reading's school committee feels strongly about its spending per student, and whatever that number is, it's a fact-based assessment. But that shouldn't necessarily influence, other than, how do we do the best job we can? I mean, it's a fact-based statement, and I'm sensitive to it. We're doing a great job, and we're getting great results, and we ought to celebrate that. That's another one of those successes that we ought to celebrate, while we both collectively work on, how do we improve our lot in life going forward?
Yeah, it's a problem. I don't look at it as a success.
Well, but I don't, that's part of the reason to meet and kind of talk through that and say, we're all on the same side here. This isn't a, you know, win-lose proposition. It's a win-win.
Yeah, some things can be lost in the soundbite.
And to be fair, your comment about integrating earlier with chiefs, I think the same thing goes with boards. If you don't work with folks, there's a, I wouldn't say animosity, but there's a distance between the groups. And, you know, I meet with a lot of people independently, but that's not as a group level. We ought to do that. So I'd very much, do you have a proposal when that might be possible?
Well, you've got to decide whether it's before or after an election coming up. I think before would be awfully nice, in March, but as a practical matter, I don't know what that accomplishes.
Well, it gets us on the same page with regards to the proposed spend, and we could probably provide some support where it's appropriate, and maybe come up with some questions, answers to questions that are likely to get asked.
Yeah, I think it'd be awfully nice, I'm not sure I'm fully up to date, but I know Chris is not running, and I know you're not running, so it'd be awfully nice to get their thoughts on the way out the door.
Absolutely. I'd support a meeting in March if we could.
I think you can swing that. I'll check with John.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Any other comments before we close?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? All those in favor? Four zero. Good night, everybody.